I was not at yesterday's fire.
Okay.
No, I missed it by day. Uh, yes. Thank you for thinking of me.
You're welcome. Every time I'm always looking, of course, in those in, in, uh, you, you're, uh, fire equipment setup, you can't tell.
All right, Allison, we're six thirty. We're, we're live on YouTube, correct? So we're gonna get, get rolling. Um, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the town of Camden Select Board meeting for April sixth, twenty twenty-one. A couple of homework items. First and foremost, um, reminder again that the, this meeting is a webinar format. The, the link for anybody who wants to attend as an attendee is on our, um, agenda. The agenda can be found on the website, um, uh, under calendar in the front page, if you want to find that. As, um, you can also, uh, there are instructions on the addenda for, um, excuse me, agenda, for dialing in, uh, if you want to choose that option. And I remind everybody that, um, as we go through, uh, agenda items, if somebody wants to make a comment during the agenda item, they could, uh, raise their hand. Uh, that's preferred approach, and we can try to recognize people to make comments during agenda items. With that, before we get into the, uh, agenda, and while we're still bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, uh, and Jenna, since you're not feeling hellishly good, I think it'd be a great time to tell us all about the update from last time about the roadside cleanup schedule, procedure, contacts, time of day, et cetera.
Well, Allison has been working on that pretty thoroughly, and we just kind of caught up about it yesterday. Um, it's going to be the twenty-fifth ish?
Uh, twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so the weekend, that weekend, um, we'll put out a press release. Um, we're taking road assignments if people want to do theirs early, um, and just kind of go on their own. Uh, we have a spreadsheet going. Um, Allison, do you have the equipment at your house?
Equipment?
The pickers and the...
No, not yet. So, I mean, yeah, the ideal thing would be, um, for everybody, as many as possible to do it the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So that's where we meet at, you know, Hannah, at the Hannahford parking lot at eight-thirty in the morning. And, um, we'll give a road assignment then, and, um, give the safety vests and pickers and all of that stuff. Um, but for anybody that, um, wants to do it, um, like you were saying, at the, a different time, um, we can, if you contact Dana or I with the number of vests that you need and pickers, we can get you that. The best, it's, it's better when we can all do it on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, because then we can have people going around and picking up the trash. Um, but we certainly don't want that to be an impediment to getting all the roads cleaned. Um, we've started a list of kind of the most, um, and some of them sort of not most important, but, um, maybe dirtiest, um, that sometimes get forgotten. Um, when we, when we leave it to everybody just to kind of choose their own road, we get a lot of like, I'll do Pearl Street and I'll do Park Street, and those are important too, but the bulk of the trash really comes from these outlying roads. And so if we can try to get, um, people to sign up for these sections of roads first, um, we'll put this right on the website, and it's an editable spreadsheet. Um, and then go from there.
Yes, and we'll be putting out a press release and a flyer and all of that.
Great. Well organized. Thank you very much. And this is gonna go on the website, you said, Allison?
Yes, doing that as we speak, actually. I, you caught me off guard, because I was trying to kind of multitask and wasn't expecting to talk about this, right?
Well, I think we do, well, everybody's still awake.
Oh, yeah, no, this is, I'm glad that we could promote it right at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you. I'll stop sharing my screen here and...
That's great. Thank you very much. Um, with that, we will commence. Yeah, sure. We will commence our agenda, starting with public input on non-agenda items. Um, uh, Jen, Jen, we don't have any that I noted.
We do not have any non-agenda.
Um, then secondly, we have, we're looking to approve.
Um, I do, I do just want to point out that we have, um, a hands or two, um, at least one up. I don't know if those hands are up to.
We can find them. We can find them. Hold on a second. Um.
Do you want me to?
Um, one second. Yeah, probably. Um.
Just a mark with his hand up. It is helpful for anybody, um, listening. If you do have the ability to rename yourself, um,
Yeah.
That is helpful, but so that we know.
Let's assume it's a, Mark is a non-agenda item. If it's an agenda item, we will, did it go away?
I just.
Oh.
Got him on to give him a chance.
I thought he disappeared.
And then Steve Gold also has his hand up, so I'll bring him in next.
Okay. Well, again, I got a suspicion they're not talking about non-agenda items, but we'll fix that. Uh, Mark, go ahead.
He's on mute.
Yep, he's off mute.
Did I, am I on the air?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, people.
Hello.
This may or may not be considered non-agenda. Uh, I get it out of the way now.
Wait, one second. Uh, who is this?
Mark Haskell, Pearl Street Camden.
Thank you, bud.
Okay. Um, I have spent some time today talking with people about two agenda items. Uh, and I'll get it out of the way now, so you don't have to wait for me later. Uh, the, uh, farmer's market and the, uh, rowing club. Okay? I spent a wonderful talk with, uh, Anna from the rowing club, and, uh, am very pleased to hear that, uh, they are now making a donation to the town each year. At least that's what I was told, uh, in, in lieu of taxes, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And I think it's a wonderful program, and I want to support them.
Thank you, Mark. Be, please be brief, or otherwise we're gonna have to put you into agenda items to be fair with everybody else.
Yep. As far as the farmer's market, same thing. I understand that they have now made at least a small donation. Uh, I would like to see it be a little bit more, but I'm glad to see that that's happening. And, uh, I support that as well. So you guys have a good night tonight. Thank you.
Take care, Mark. Steve, is yours a non-agenda item?
Yes, this is a non-agenda item.
Okay, go.
Uh, it's my impression from your last meeting and from what I read in the newspaper that you may put an item on the warrant for a plan for the tannery, and this is a plan that no citizens have seen. This is a plan that I understand involves zoning changes, and the planning board has never seen this. And it may indeed involve altered financials from the last offer. It may even involve tax credits. And I just don't think it's proper to put something like that on the town warrant with such total non-information to the citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good to see you. Um, I, I, I think that's all the hands were raised, Alice. Is that correct? Okay. Take care, take care, Steve. Maybe we'll talk to you later. Um, next item would be the, um, approval, not item three, would be approval of a funding request from the Coastal Mountain Search and Rescue. And I believe there are two people, Mark, you wanted to bring in. Uh, would you give Allison those names?
Yes, um, uh, Matthew Severio and Jonathan Ward. I don't know which one is.
I think they're both.
Yeah, I see them. Um.
There we go.
And...
There's Jonathan and Matthew. See them both. Hi, Jonathan.
Hi, how's it going?
Hi, Ma- Matthew, how you doing?
Good evening.
I know you have a brief present kind of hopefully underlined word brief. We've got a full agenda tonight, so I know Jonathan how Chris Buchanby, so please.
And you too, Matthew. Okay.
So please, uh, if you'd like to share your screen, go for it.
Sure. I'll, I'll go ahead and share the screen and, um,
And I'll do the talking.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we can both talk at the same time, right?
You can do that.
Okay, um, so very briefly, I wanted to, uh, touch base with a very brief background on, uh, search and rescue in Maine and locally, uh, and talk about the role of, uh, Coastal Mountain Search and Rescue in that. Let me, uh, go ahead to our next slide, Matt. Um, so basically, search and rescue in Maine is a, uh, is a volunteer effort. Uh, about fifteen volunteer teams are coordinated by the Maine Warden Service. Uh, there are some specialty teams, including search and rescue dogs, a mounted unit, and, uh, about five technical rescue teams, of which, uh, we at Coastal Mountain are one. Go ahead. And, um, Coastal Mountain is not new. There, uh, there actually has been a, uh, a search and rescue team in the area for about, uh, about twenty years under various names. Um, most recently, that was facilitated under Northeast Mobile Health. Uh, last year, a number of the folks, um, in that team, uh, got together and founded, uh, Coastal Mountain Search and Rescue, uh, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit. And we became certified by MACAR, which is the Maine Association for Rescue, uh, Search and Rescue, um, as of last May. Uh, our, our duties are to provide ground search and technical rescue anywhere in the state that we're asked to. We can be dispatched by the, uh, by MACAR, the Maine Association for Search and Rescue, or at the request of, um, local fire and EMS. And, uh, we maintain equipment cache, uh, at the Lincolnville Fire Department. Go ahead. Uh, right now, we've got about twenty-five members. That has been growing steadily. Um, there's our Board of Directors. Um, Matt and Alan there are very experienced climbers, uh, as is Noah Kleiner, our treasurer, uh, Seagrid's, uh, an intermediate climber. And, um, uh, Landon, Mark, and myself are, uh, members at large, uh, of that. Go ahead. Um, a little bit on backgrounds. We've got, uh, a bunch of climbing guides. We've got a couple of main registered guides, firefighter EMTs, a couple of folks on ski patrol, um, three local educators, a couple of ham radio operators, uh, as well. And go ahead. So what we're, what we're looking for is some funding for our initial equipment needs. Um, and I've got a little bit, little bit of detail on each of these three items. Um, the first is a titanium litter for patient rescue. Uh, it's a two-piece lightweight unit that can be carried up a mountain, uh, with a minimum of effort. And a wheel to go on that. Um, you'll see a picture of it here in a moment. Um, and, um, this equipment is basically going to assist us in, in, um, two areas, uh, when we respond to Camden. Uh, the technical climbing area by Barrett's Cove, the cliff, uh, and also the new round the mountain trail, which, of course, um, when it's completed, will go nine miles through Lincoln, uh, through, um, Hope, Camden, and Rockport. Go ahead. Uh, the titanium litter, uh, is ideal for local terrain. Uh, the, the cost on that is, is twenty-nine fifty. Um, and there's actually a picture of it in the next slide, along with the wheel. Um, that wheel, uh, if you put six rescuers on that litter, uh, with the wheel, which, if you look closely, you can see a kind of a bicycle-type brake on there. Um, makes the whole litter much more maneuverable and actually, uh, enables you to, um, to get it down a trail with, uh, far less effort. Um, and that, uh, the tab on that is, uh, sixteen twenty-five. And then we'll go on to the last, uh, set of items. Um, basically, what these are is these are ascent and descent devices. Um, the, uh, American Society of Technical Manufacturers, which sets the standards for search and rescue, uh, says that you've basically got to have two, uh, a dual rope system whenever you're doing, uh, technical rescue. And this allows a quick transition from, uh, from a raising situation, taking someone up a cliff, um, to taking someone down. Um, I think I have the, the initial, um, initial price tag on that was around seventy-six.
Fifty.
Fifty for the three items. It was in that first slide.
Um, okay. Let's, um, get back, um, to, um, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah. Um, so basically, our current funding sources are, are dues, uh, municipal support, like what we're requesting from Town of Camden. We're also the beneficiaries of the McGuntuck Cook, um, fifty K race. Um, and we will be applying for grants such as the Stephen and Tabitha King Grant. I think that pretty much sums up, um, what I've got.
Okay. Let's get back to, uh, full screen, if you would, Matthew, and, and share. And we can discuss this matter. Um, obviously, you're looking for about seventy-six cent. Ma- Mark.
Uh, let me start off. Um, as I am a founding member of the team, because of my twenty years of experience in Los Angeles doing mountain search and rescue, I was asked by Ray Fisk, who does, uh, emerged, uh, theme emergency service for the, the county, to assist with the team, because he knew about my background and I was brought in. So I've been working with them. So because of that, I'm gonna step away from the vote.
Oh, Mark, you have to, you were, I presume you're accusing yourself in the discussion of the vote.
I am.
I thought you would. Um, that's why I wanted to ask you, but go ahead, Allison.
Hold on. I don't know that that's helpful. Um, because...
He has a choice, Allison. He's, he's on the board.
You can, you can ask me questions.
There's, there's, there's no financial stake. That would be like us having to recuse ourselves every time we talk about Mickle Solid Waste. Um,
So, so Mark can, what Mark can do if, if, um, he can say that, uh, he has a perceived conflict of interest as a member of that board, and then the rest of you vote on whether or not it's an actual conflict of interest.
That's right.
And, and by definition of conflict of interest is if you have a financial stake in the endeavor, organization, what have you.
That's correct.
My, 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 my only financial stake is I have to pay dues like everyone else does. I have to pay the money.
I was gonna say, it's probably the opposite.
I mean, to me, I think, Mark, it's for, for me to make decisions about how to allocate funding for in this specific area, having Mark as part of the discussion is helpful to me. Um.
Well, you can certainly do that.
I mean, I don't, I think if it comes to it, that's really controversial or whatever, but I, I would request that Mark at least be part of the discussion at.
I think we can do that. But I think that's probably a, a good approach. Mark has answers as would, uh, Jonathan or Matthew on the operations, if we have any questions, and Anna recused herself in the vote. That's fine also. Mark?
Well, let me offer, uh, two quick things, then. The specific equipment we're, we're, they're asking for, or we're asking for, is specifically, um, because the question is why Camden? And the reason requesting the money from Camden, um, is because the two, uh, pieces of, main pieces of equipment, the clutch kit and the titanium litter are specifically important for rescues in our area. The nine-mile trail, if we have somebody five miles in that needs, uh, bringing out in a litter, uh, it's almost impossible to carry somebody long-term. Titanium, uh, steel litters that a lot of fire departments use, they're just gone s- small, uh, small, uh, areas of, of ground are very heavy. A titanium litter allows you to carry it in, uh, because it has to be carried on a person. Um, that's a break-apart litter, so people can wear it as a backpack and carry it in. Um, and it allows, and the wheel allows you to bring somebody out a long distance.
Right.
And the second one, um, because of the cliffs at, at Barrett's Cove, there are a lot of climbers, there, the, the members of the team have done rescues there before. Um, and it is the, the strongest climbing area in the whole region. So that's why the, the request is particular to Camden.
Okay. Allison.
I guess my questions are a little bit more, maybe I would let Taylor go first, because they're not specific. It's more about, um, the, the equipment itself looks very useful. Um, I'm wondering how this fits into sort of the larger structure of, um, town government and the shared responsibility for emergency medical services, who it's sort of the, I've, I've heard about this organization before, and it seemed like a great thing that was maybe filling a need. But at the same time, I'm also confused about why there is that need, who is technically responsible for responding to this type of thing, um, why this model where we would be funding, you know, a, a, a very worthy group, it seems, but not just budgeting for it within our, our normal process, or, um, to fill in a few of the gaps there for me.
I'd be happy to speak to that.
Yeah, just, just as a backdrop, just a second, Matt, from Kathy, sorry. Um, Deirdre, the, the request we responded, just to be clear, is, would be coming from the existing EMS budgets. Is that correct?
Correct. So, um, we have a lot of funds in that budget from this year that have been unspent, um, because we weren't able to get that program up and going this year. So that's where, uh, you know, I would recommend that you, um, fund this one.
Do you know what that budget is, uh, magnitude-wise right now?
Uh, they're about thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. I just wanted to get, put that on the table. Go ahead, Matthew. Please answer and address Allison's question.
Sure. So, um, our roots started, uh, as, um, being loosely affiliated with Camden First Aid. Um, some of you may know William Bentley, um, former paramedic in the area, high school teacher. I started doing high-angle rescue with him when I was fifteen years old. He was my teacher in high school. Um, we started doing, um, providing that service for the state park and the local area, um, literally as a, just a totally informal, uh, call list. Um, so we've been doing this a long time. When we were part of Camden First Aid before it, um, dismantled, um, we were starting to get more formalized, and at that point, uh, we were looking into becoming part of the state-certified team as well. So we would have both the ability to, um, respond on the state level and on the local level through Camden First Aid. We were then sort of acquired by Northeast, um, to continue to fill that role. Um, the, the, as, as a relationship with Northeast, um, it became harder for us to facilitate becoming a, um, a part of, on a, on the state level and maintain that local level with Northeast. So, um, that was one of the big drivers that was our decision to become independent. Um, it gives us more flexibility. It gives us, um, a greater, um, umbrella at the state level under the Warden Service and, uh, Maine Association for Search and Rescue. Um, but we've always felt the need to provide the local service for the local climbers and the, in the state park. Um, and now with the amount of mountain biking, um, and activity in the park and the trails in the area, it's, you know, there's just, there's so much going on now. I think we're just gonna see more and more of the level of need for response on a local level. Um, I, I know MDI, I have a lot of friends on MDI Search and Rescue, and you know, they've had more calls in the past two years than they've ever had. Um, and, um, so I think, I think it's, you know, as far as providing a local service, um, there are, uh, there is another search and rescue team in Waldo County. Um, they are resurrecting the circum and rescue team in Lincoln County. Um, they, both of them do not do any technical rescue, so the closest technical rescue team is MDI Search and Rescue. So we, we are who would get called if there was a, um, a high-angle rescue call.
Thank you, Matthew. Uh, Taylor, you got a question?
Um, yeah, similar sort of question. I think mine, um, I think I know the answer, but just for the sake of clarity. Um, Matt, what's the, is this something that's not gonna be a duplication of resources or efforts that we already have in the area? So for example, I think most people know that local fire departments already do like low-angle litter carries for people that come down trails. Um, but as far as I know, no local fire departments provide high-angle technical rescue that requires certification and use of ropes. So like if someone is stuck on the side of a cliff, that's a high angle. This is a specialized resource that you provide that's not currently being provided. Is that an accurate way to look at it?
Correct.
Um, and how do you work with the local fire departments? How does that process work to make sure that the resources are not duplicated?
Well, none of them do the high-angle rescue, so that's a simple solution. As far as, um, responding to, um, search and rescue calls on, um, low-angle terrain or steep-angle terrain, we train with Camden. We train with Lincolnville. Um, we, we are, um, working towards training with the state park and their rangers as well this year. So, um, we essentially want to be a resource. We train for this anyway, because we're training to be on the state-level response. So we want to be a resource on the local level, um, as well. And, you know, if, if you have to carry a litter out, one of the advantages to that wheel um, is that it can reduce the number of people and how much we have to do to carry somebody off the mountain. Um, the typical, uh, litter carry, if you're talking about having to carry out a half mile, you want to have a series of people rotating through, um, that litter on, uh, if you're physically carrying it. And, you know, you really want anywhere from twelve to twenty-four people available to do that. With the wheel, you can greatly reduce that need, so.
Other comments? Jenna, Mark, you have your hand up.
Uh, one thing I want to, uh, make sure that everybody understands, everybody on the team has to go through, uh, Maine State Certification. Uh, there, there's a training regimen that everybody's going through and has to be signed off on, uh, before they can become a full member of the team. And that's been ongoing now for basically all winter. Um, if anybody wants to join me next winter doing night navigation training at thirty degrees in the snow, uh, you're welcome to come out, because it's a very interesting procedure.
Thanks, Mark. I might take a bye on that one. Um, board, do I have a motion or any action or what recommended?
Bob, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jenna.
I just want to express my support for this. Um, in my life as a journalist, I covered a really severe fall, um, right there on the McGuntuck Cliffs. Um, and actually, I'm now friends with the person. I did not know her at the time, but she was very lucky and broke her collarbone, had some, but it was extremely, um, extremely lucky, a sixty-five-foot fall. And we were, I think this is something that we really need. I think it's collaborative. Um, I think it obviously has some good history and roots in the community, so I would make a motion that we grant them their funding request.
Second. Well said.
Motion made and seconded. Um, any other discussion? Um, before we do, I just want to clarify what Deirdre said, um, about the Mark's perceived conflict. Um, I want to hear the other board's members. Uh, I do believe it is a perceived conflict of interest, because he's a, he's not preposing the talent in this organization as we do at Mickle Solid Waste. It's a different situation. It'd be like if I was on a, on a charity someplace requesting money from the, from the town for any reason, that would be, for me, a perceived conflict of interest. But I had needed the opinion of the rest of the board.
I know. I wasn't saying it wasn't a perceived conflict. It's, it doesn't meet the standard for a legal conflict of interest. Um, it doesn't matter, and, and I'm not, I just want Mark to be a part of the conversation. I wasn't saying that.
No, I want to be fair.
I wasn't disagreeing that there are needs, that we needed to address it.
No, okay. Well, I, I thought it'd be good, just because I just wanted to put it on the table. This happens sometimes. And Deirdre's exactly right. If the rest of the board disagrees, what do I just said? That's fine. We can do that. But I think I know where this is going, so we're not gonna make a big deal out of it, Mark, and thank you for bringing it up. So with that, I will, uh, pull the other four members of the board for this motion. Uh, Allison?
Hi.
Jenna?
Oh, jeez, I.
Taylor?
Hi.
Bob, hi. Thank you so much for zero one, and thank you, gentlemen, for coming, and best of luck with the new equipment and all your operations. Good job.
Well, thank you very much for your support, and it's good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Um, on our agenda, item four, the approval of a new Vittler license for Wolf Peach at fifty Elm Street. Um, Jenice?
Uh, Gabriella's in the audience.
Oh, she is. Bring her on board, if you would, um, please.
I think it's Gabriella Sero, something like that. She lies in.
Um.
Can you find her, Allison?
And what is it? MJS?
G A B.
What's that?
This is Gabriella. Maybe she left. She was.
No, no, she just raised her hand.
She, you see, I, I see her.
Above Alex Cohen's name.
Oh, it's because of my screen. Sorry. Um.
I got it. It's, she's up. And Alex Cohen?
No.
No.
Hi, all.
Hi, hello. One second. We're just gonna get ourselves organized.
Hold on. I, I, I'll, I'll, don't, just make sure you don't remove him from the meeting. Just.
No, well, you take care of it, Allison. You're better at this than I am. Thank you so much.
I did it. Sorry.
Welcome to Camden.
Yeah, Gabriella, please introduce yourselves.
Hi, um, I'm Gabriella Sero.
And I'm Derek Richard.
Um, and we, uh, bought the, what, what was the former Druthy Bear, fifty Elm, last fall. Um, and are, I have finally kind of done, done all of our, our work, et cetera, and ready to get going as, as new business owners here in town. Very excited.
Congratulations.
We're excited, but also, I, I, what I hear of the menu is exciting to me, maybe not to some others on the board, but it's very exciting.
Great spot.
It really is. It really is.
Yeah.
But with that, board, we, uh, because I have a motion for, uh, their Vittler license for Wolf Peach.
I will make a motion to approve the Vittler, Vittler's license for Wolf Peach at fifty Elm Street.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
I, I will second, although I must say that just having this conversation is making me hungry.
Uh, I, I just found it interesting, um, in the application, the, the parking situation. Um, did I see that there, is this a reflection of? Did I see that there, is this a reflection of our requirement to allocate a certain number of parking? Spots and you're leasing parking spots from the Camden Parking Company?
Yes. Yep. We were told that we had, based on our, the number of seats that we were applying for within, um, within our, our floor plan, we had to have a certain number of parking spaces available per seat. And I was told we needed to lease from someone in town within a certain distance from the, from, yeah, location.
And yeah, and it sounds like you did exactly what you're supposed to do. And this is, it doesn't often come up where I see this because a lot of those arrangements have just been there for a long time, or maybe I just haven't looked carefully. But, um, I don't remember ever thinking if I went to the Doody Bear that, you know, my parking option would be over there. And it just kind, it just kind of speaks to some of the ridiculous nature of maybe some of, I'm not asking you to weigh in at all on our ordinances or anything, but, um, it was interesting to see that come up and to think like, huh, that's a, that's a barrier that is put in place that doesn't.
By the way, this is the second business that we recently had this requirement for.
Right. And I've heard you for Audra. And then also I, I'm not aware that the town does, spends a lot of time going and making sure that all of these spots are, you know, do they get, you know, does anybody that goes to that business?
Audit the spots to make sure that, yeah.
I mean, I'm not suggesting that we do that. It, I mean, it just, it's an interesting like feature of our economy that we've created.
I totally agree. One, one second, let me get through the vote on your vitler license. I have another question for you before we, we have another item to you also. But with that, I'll take a roll call vote, Mark.
Yes, aye.
Jenna.
Aye.
Alison.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
And Bob, I five zero for the vitler license. Congratulations. But I got to ask a question. I forgot to ask, where did Wolf Peach come from?
Ah, Wolf Peach. So is tomato, the scientific name for the tomato, Lico persicum.
Boy, he learns something every day. I would never have guessed that.
Did you, did you have a comment? I saw you raising your hand. Did you?
Yeah, no, I mean, I did. I just, if it's all right, I do, I did want to kind of comment on the parking. Because it, it was, for me, it was a very fascinating process because I asked for a little bit of guidance about how we were supposed to go about finding parking. And I, I didn't get a lot of information. And so I just started kind of calling businesses around town who I knew had parking lots. And across the board, people either, you know, understandably, were like, no, but these are, these have to be dedicated for our business. Even if they were daytime versus our nighttime service. And I also ran into a couple of folks saying that they had gotten in trouble for leasing spaces. That had, I guess, because they were already allocated to their own business. And so it was technically a double up. So it was surprisingly, through the process of opening a restaurant, which is pretty crazy. One of the more difficult things that I felt like a little crazy of like, how am I spending all of this time doing this? And I could understand, you know, if it was something that was going directly to the town, you know, for maintenance of streets and that sort of thing, like totally makes sense. But the fact that it was going to a private company and also there was no guarantee, you know, there's, there's no rule anywhere that I've found that we have to advertise that that's where the parking is or that we have to enforce it, you know, so it just, it, it was a bit surprising and, and felt a little
Sure.
like a stumbling block for
Drop it, right. We're going to want to our public, we have it. Thank you very much for your interesting, non-notable speeches.
I mean, this is, we should put this on the agenda. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we should, we should talk about this. That's exactly the kind of thing that we talk about of trying to figure out what are the barriers and why is Camden so like difficult? When this is exactly the kind of thing that Camden wants to attract more of.
Right.
So to learn about what the barriers were.
I have them on my list. I agree with you. We have a, a five collective, five collective items on for public hearing. Just for the public perceptions and, and for the purpose of the public hearing, it's for the town staff select board to get input from the public on matters at hand, input. If anybody wants to make a comment during the public hearing, it just simply need to raise their hand. Typically would let, we would request respectively that you be briefed approximately three minutes, addressed me, the chair. And please be courteous. And like I said, you know, please speak your mind. When all the public individuals in public have spoken on a matter, we, I will close that portion of the public hearing and revert to select for deliberation. There'll be no more. And for that item, there'll be no more questions to the public unless a select word member has a question of somebody who has spoken, spoken previously. And by happenstance, our first item on the public hearing tonight is for a liquor license for Wolf Peach at 50 Elm Street. Would you all, since you're here, like to make a public comment on the liquor license for Wolf Peach? You don't have to, by the way, but since you're there. So I give you the opportunity.
There was the liquor license here already, so I'm hoping that it won't be an issue, but.
No, Mark, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, but I have a question first.
Of them?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
My question is, since you have this, this opportunity, please tell us about your menu. And also you have a barbecue thing you're doing ahead of time. Let's take this moment to, to talk about the restaurant and let us hear about it. And make me even hungrier than I am now.
Let's, let's get through the liquor license and I'll give them an opportunity. There, there are no more. That's not, no problem. I'd like to hear it myself if they, truth, I'm already hungry. But with that, I'd like to close this portion of public hearing on this matter and revert to a select board deliberation on the matter. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the new liquor license for Wolf Peach at 50 Elm Street.
I'll second that.
Comments? Not hearing any, a roll call vote, Taylor.
Aye.
Alison.
Aye.
Jenna.
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, aye also. You, the liquor license is hereby approved. Now, Mark, before we skip to the next public hearing, I don't, why don't you ask your question?
Tell us about the restaurant. Tell us what you're doing. I have a 15 year old son that loves beef.
Alison, sit down. It's okay.
So this, I hope, I hope to be able to please all of you. So the good thing is, um, we, we are Wolf Peach, we're, we're kind of calling it a chop house. We did that intentionally because what we are going to be serving is not just meat, it's not just steak. You know, we, we are taking basically the format of that menu where everything is served individually, à la carte. And we are overlaying a little bit more kind of updated and certainly influenced by, by coastal Maine. The, the food content itself is going to be, of course, we are going to have, you know, some steaks and some, you know, fish chop and that sort of thing. But we're also planning on doing a lot of, of large format vegan options and vegetarian. And then a lot of, you know, sides and that sort of thing. So really, you can kind of, if you are a person who likes to come in with your friends and order a lot of things and share them, you can do that. If you prefer to sit down and have kind of your composed entree in front of them, in front of yourself, you can also do that. So it's really however you want to do it. And then a pretty classic narrow beverage program. Focusing on mostly domestic things. I'm a big fan of, of domestic wines. And I think our cider and beer community here in Maine is, is really amazing. So we're going to kind of equally focus across the board, wine, beer and cider. And then a really small selection of very classic cocktails, but reimagined with hopefully mo- mostly local distillations. And of course, you know, Derek is the chef. All as much as we can on all working with local farms and local fishermen and, and that sort of thing.
Last question, when is it opening?
So we're, that's why the barbecue, because with COVID and with tourism opening, we were very nervous about trying to execute this vision. Especially because a lot of the, the way we're going to handle service is very intimate and the space is small. So we really wouldn't be able to, you know, safely fit people in there. So we decided to put a pin in it, aim for next fall. And Derek actually moved to Maine from Port, from Austin. And so we're going to do a kind of a temporary pop up this summer, only on the weekends, offering takeout, contactless pickup of barbecue. And again, even that, we're hoping to have a, you know, it will obviously be more meat than not. But we are offering some vegan and vegetarian options that are hearty and fulfilling. And subject to approval this evening, we are planning to open this coming Saturday.
Well, looking forward to it. And thanks for coming and giving us all information and the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye. We are still in public hearing for a second matter, which is, I think Jeremy's going to be coming on board for this also, which is the approval for the warrant for the Camden zoning orders to amend the town of Camden official zoning map. At Lions Lane, uh, for the town of Camden wastewater plant, which we reviewed in the past. Does anybody have any questions on this warrant or comments? Not hearing it. Do I have a motion?
I will, I will make a motion that we approve. Do you want to do them one at a time?
I think we should.
The Camden zoning ordinance amend the town of Camden official zoning map, map 120 lot 53 for 20 Lions Lane, town of Camden wastewater plant.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made. Any discussion? Roll call, Alison.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Hi, and I'm sorry about the dogs.
Well, dog, you vote too. Mark.
Aye.
Bob, I five zero, fine. On the second item we have. And by the way, monitor any public hand raising on these, Alison, if you wouldn't let me know if you see any. I, I didn't see any on this one. Camden zoning ordinance amend article eight, section five B, 10, parent permitted uses. Are there any hands raised, Alison? I don't think so. Cool. I'll close the public portion and go and move to a motion.
Mark, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we, that we move forward, the Camden zoning ordinance to amend article eight, section five B, uh, number 10 permitted uses.
Second.
Motion made and second, roll call, Jenna.
Bob.
Hi.
Jeremy.
Yeah, just a comment. We need to do these as one warrant article when it goes to voters because it's one package.
You mean A, B and C and D?
B and C.
Okay, let's go, let's go, let's revert then and, uh, Mark retract the motion.
I'll, I'll amend the motion.
But before you do, are there any hands raised for Camden zoning ordinance, uh, uh, metting the article eight? For the two, the two portions, which is B and C on the agenda. I don't think there are any hands raised. So, Mark, go ahead.
I'll amend the ocean to approve moving forward to amend article, uh, number B, Camden zoning ordinance amend article eight, section five B, 10 permitted uses. And number C, Camden zoning ordinance, ordinance amend article eight, section five C. Uses permitted as a special, as special exceptions.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and second, roll call, vote, Taylor.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Alison.
Aye.
Bob, I five zero. Does that work, Jeremy? Okay, we have the last item of public hearing is the Camden Public Ordinance to amend to add parts one to G, unhosted short term rental registration ordinance. I believe, do we have any hands raised, Alison, on this one?
Uh, yes, Alex Cohen has raised his hand and Deb Dogg. I will start bringing them in.
Thank you.
Order they were received.
That's perfect. Alex, you there?
Am I there?
I hear you, Alex. Go ahead. Identify, there you are.
Hi, Alex Cohen. I, um, I guess.
Alex, get a state of your residency.
Uh, Alex Cohen, Camden.
That's fine.
I guess I'm just looking for a little background. I wasn't aware of this ordinance ballot item. Maybe I haven't been following politics closely enough, but I just wondered what the quick genesis of it was. I have some other questions too, but is there?
Go ahead, Alison.
I mean, if no, I'm willing to give it or you can.
Or I will, either one.
You might, maybe you should try it faster.
I don't know about faster. Um, the, um, Alex, it comes down to a simple focus on taking the some first minor steps in our opinion toward the regulation of short term rentals and in a very specific area, which is referenced by this ordinance amendment. As any first step of basically trying to understand an inventory of, of what we have in the town and what we're dealing with as we may or may not go forward with other regulations related to STR. Alison.
I think, you know, it's something that's been talked about since I got on the select board from many different groups that have opinions about this. This, I, in, in the past, we've not been sort of willing as a group to move forward on any of the things that were, you know, asked of us from this group or from that group. There's been disagreement about, you know, everything from like whether, whether it's a problem or the degree of the problem. There, we've received other input from people that are upset by the current regulations. I think sometimes we forget that there are, Camden does have regulations. So this isn't the first step to regulate. We have that ordinance or it's a definition of dwelling unit that causes homes to only be allowed to be rented out for seven days or more. And, you know, I think I, I personally see a lot of problems with that. That has unintended consequences too. So, um, the consistent thing that we sort of have been able to agree on is that we don't have very good data about how many of these, you know, how many short term rentals are there? Where are they? Is it an issue of people just, you know, buying houses and having them be investment properties in the long term? Or is this a case of people, you know, for, for a year or two at a time, just using that as an income boost and then moving back to Camden? A lot of people state things about the impact of short term rentals, but we really, it's just a lot of speculation. And so I feel like what this doesn't, you know, it doesn't require inspections. It doesn't touch anything where it, it doesn't even require registration for any property where the owner is present on the property. All the, the intention is to create a very much not onerous process that will just allow us to be able to say, okay, we know we have 300 of these in Camden right now, or however many there are. And then maybe there's a point where we could say, well, if we have 300 now, 600 would be too many. Or, and we can have that discussion when we have better information. But I'm personally tired of having the discussion without good information. So I think that's kind of where we're.
Thank you. That's, thank you. That's very, more poignant than what I presented it. Alex, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my comment is, you know, I hear two things. I sort of hear Alison like saying it won't be, you know, like it sounds like there's some formula, like format of maybe what will take place after this might be approved. But I, I guess I, I guess I, I kind of think the language of the way it's presented, it, it, it kind of assumes that there's a problem. It seems that it, 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 it presumes that there, that there's a public and public safety problem, I guess. And that it assumes that there are these nuisances. I guess I just don't think, you know, that, that seems confusing. And, and then again, you know, if it's, if it's about registration, that's one thing. And then if it's about, you know, something else more involved, that's misleading.
Understood. Yeah, good comment. Thank you, Alex, very much.
I think that purpose part of it is a little bit, it's, it's kind of like we put in every possible purpose that there could be. It was either almost that we would either put in, well, there is no purpose to this. We're required, if we have an ordinance, to, to state a purpose. That's what the, the state gives us the authority to enact ordinances. But only if there is a purpose. Just wanting to count them isn't a purpose. I think all of the things that have been, that were mentioned in the ordinance are things that have been brought up continuously. Some people would say it's just, you know, the economic vitality of our town depends on a certain number of these. It depends on, right now you can't rent a house in Camden for the, for the weekend. So I think it's, it's not necessarily that the there are, there's a lot of disagreement about this issue in Camden. As you know, we do hear about it a lot. And so I think this is just an effort to address, you know, all of those things that were brought up are things that are in the ordinance as the purpose. Are things that have been brought up. That doesn't mean that we as a group have come to any agreement about what the next best step would be. Nothing, nothing right now is like, well, we're going to do this and then we're going to do this. would be. Um, nothing, nothing right now is like, well, we're going to do this and then we're going to do this. Um, that's not what this ordinance does because even just this group doesn't agree. I don't think on what that next step would be. So you don't have to feel like this is.
But is the purpose of the warrant article to get a, a num- like to, to somehow have some jurisdiction to figure out how many short-term rentals there are? Is, is that, is that the sole purpose of, of the warrant article? Or is it something else?
No, so we want to be able to require that, um, in order, you know, anybody that does post one of these short-term rentals, they, they need to fill something out with the town in much the same fashion as you would be required to, um, fill out a burn permit maybe, or, or, um, uh, register your dog. I, I don't want to draw any false analogies, but it is not meant to be. Um, you know, if there is a fee associated with it, it would be one of, a fee that would be set by the select board. Um,
And I say, we, we do have a situation where there are a number of these where, um, we don't have a contact for the owner. They're all managed through a out-of-state management company. And we've had significant issues with those where we haven't been able to contact a property owner and address issues that we've needed to address. So that's a really important part of this as well.
Alright, we're gonna, um, um, Allison, unless she has something else, uh, it's drafted as it is, and we have been discussing this for over a month now, so it's not, not new. But, um, I understand your points. I get.
I missed it then.
Well, that's okay. I believe that's why we have this, right? But, um, it does go to the public and they're going to be the, that they're our legislative body and decide whether they want to take this first step or not. So with that, I'd like to move on to, thank you Alex for coming on tonight. Good to see you. Um, Deb Dodge, please.
Hi. Am I there?
You were there.
Okay, great. Um, thank you so much. Um, I want to.
Deb, just introduce yourself because you're not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Deb Dodge and I live in Camden.
Yep.
And, and I have an interest in this, um, for a couple of reasons. Um, one is, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, what the purpose has to say. Um, because the cohesiveness of our neighborhoods, I think, is important. And my hostess asked me to start my video. Okay, I was wanting to sort of keep you all in the dark, but.
You're, you're allowed as long as I know who you are.
That's okay. Um, I think the care, residential character of our neighborhoods is really important. Um, having people, um, live in our houses year-round is important for so many parts of our community, whether it is people that can, um, spend the money in town all year-round in our businesses or staff our town committees, uh, be part of the school system, all of that. The fabric of the community depends on having, you know, year-round residents. And, um, so I think it's important for us to get a handle on what the proliferation is of unhoseded or non-resident-owned um, short-term rentals, because that can have an impact. Um, and, and I know that Alex has some concerns about what, what could be next. Um, but nobody wants to try and design any regulations based on assumptions. So I back up exactly what Allison had to say about how important it is for the town to get a handle on what the proliferation is of unhoseded, um, short-term rentals in our community. And to me, you know, I, I'll be honest, I, I think an unhoseded short-term rental is more commercial in nature. Um, than certainly a single-family residence. Um, it is more on par with a B and B or an inn. And so I think the town has an interest, um, in knowing how many of those, many of those exist. I do not think this registration ordinance is burdensome, um, in any way. I sent an email in to you all about some suggestions I had, um, regarding requiring a certificate, certificate of insurance. Because I think for protection for the owner of the short-term rental, they may need more than just, uh, the regular residential insurance. Um, and I think for, uh, protection of whomever is renting it as well. But that is something to me that could be an amendment later on after this passed. Um, I would not hold up this at all, um, for that, even though I think it's something that I would like you all to consider as a second step. Would be adding certificate of insurance as a requirement, as well as some kind of inspection to know that there are smoke detectors, CO detectors, fire extinguishers, you know, and unblocked exits. I think that that's important for the safety of the person who's renting it, whether they're renting it for three days, five days, seven days, eight, whatever. Um, as well as safety of the neighborhood. So I think those are things that are important to consider going forward. I see this as a good step, the way you guys have written it. And let's get this passed and then see if we can add the requirement for insurance and some kind of inspection at a later date. So that's all I have to say. And I support, I support this proposal.
Thank you, Deb. I got to share all of your thoughts. Um, sometimes you got to take the first step to realize what path you're on.
Yeah.
Good. Um, I think we have one, take care Deb.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we have Mark Sigenthaler. I see, um, Mark, you there?
I am, yes.
Please introduce yourself, even though we know who you are. Especially since you're black.
Hold on here.
Okay, we'll wait. It's, it's, it's your fate. There you are.
There we go. I am Mark Sigenthaler, Camden resident. Uh, I have some some things to say about this and some concerns. You know, you, you say this, this wants to be put on the books so that we have uh, facts and figures and numbers of vacation rentals. And it's, it's funny Allison, you brought it up, the number of 300. Well, um, when, when we brought this up to Jeremy at the planning board meeting last week, um, he stated that, that this whole police ordinance was to gain facts and numbers about vacation rentals. Then he went on to state that he's been dealing with consulting firms. And it's been determined that there are 300 plus vacation rentals in the town of Camden. Eighty percent of them are non-owner occupied. So yeah, I'm, I'm having a problem. It sounds like a big sales pitch to me. Because you're looking for the numbers, but you, you have the numbers. Bert, that's first, alright? Second, I want to make it very clear to the town of Camden, that this has never been discussed with the planning board. And that my feeling is that the police ordinance is a roundabout way to get to get this on the books and then build from there. Uh, and it's, it's a way to circumvent public discussion and really discuss what this town wants.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you say this, this, that this police ordinance um, is just fact-finding. But the requirements are registration cards, payment of fees set from time to time on an annual basis by the select board. Alright, and this is considered a a civil violation with penalties. So it's not just a simple fact-finding mission, alright? This, this police ordinance has teeth. So the next question is, I mean, if we've got 300 vacation rentals, we're turning that management over to the police department. And if, if they really have the time and ability to deal with 300 vacation rentals, do we really need to look at maybe the staffing of the police department?
Okay. Um, alright, Mark, going back, Jeff, Jeremy, do you want to respond to any of these points?
I, I'll kind of take it because I guess with the police ordinance, our lodging, our vitulars licenses all sit in the police ordinance. So this is no different from that. And just because it sits in the police ordinance doesn't mean the police department necessarily has responsibility over enforcing it. They certainly might have a piece of it, but with all those other licensing requirements, you saw that couple who came in with Wolf Peach tonight, their requirements for lodging and vitrals, that all sat in the police ordinance. I bet they couldn't even tell you the name of a police officer. So it just, it goes through the planning department and through my office just as much as it goes through the police department. So that's point number one. Point number two, just because we've had some IT firms sort of do a scrape of data to try and give us an idea of what the number might be, doesn't mean we have an accurate picture and they're the first ones to tell you that. Sometimes we'll get properties that are in Hope or Lincolnville or Rockport that are listed as being in Camden. So we do not have any clear picture of the scope of this and whether or not it's a problem. And we're never going to unless we do something like this to actually get people to register. And there's no way that we can get people to register just voluntarily. There needs to be some sort of enforcement around registering. And that's why it sits within this. It's not a criminal offense if you don't register, just like any other ordinance we have. It's civil in nature.
Right. Right. Um, Allison, you have a comment?
I would also just add that there is a, a fair amount of town staff time that is going into this issue already, because since we do have an ordinance, um, or a definition in our ordinance that limits these, uh, rentals to seven-day periods or, um, seven days or more. It causes a, a significant number of complaints to come in that are very difficult to follow up on. And so the, you know, various interest groups or various people with everybody from, from neighbors that are concerned because their neighbor is they're noticing that cars are coming in and it's seeming to change over faster than, um, what they think is allowed. Or just, um, you know, competing businesses or in-owners. So we're spending a lot of time trying to follow up on that and figure it out and pull up Airbnb to find contact information. And that costs, the fact that these short-term rentals exist all and that we have an ordinance that deals with it, it's costing all taxpayers money and town staff time to try to deal with that. And so if we were to just even be able to bring in at a very, if the select board were to set a fee every year, and that's the most reasonable way of doing it, because, um, yes, the select board could change that fee from time to time, but people get to elect the select board. And so that's the best opportunity for, and when the select board sets fees, there's a public hearing. You get to go and, and give your opinion about it. And then the select board members of the community have to be able to answer to, to, to everybody. So there, I, there hasn't been, um, a history of unreasonable fees set. If anything, fees are set too low, um, or not at all, because select board members are not brave enough to, to accurately allocate, okay, this is the amount of staff time that is going to this very small group of people. Um, and we're not going to gather things because of
Right.
because of it. So that is just, you know, one point that we are already putting a fair amount of energy into this. Um.
Thank, thanks Allison. Um, and thank you, Mark. Thanks for coming on. I appreciate it. Um, I don't think we have anybody else with their hands up at the moment, correct?
See, there is something in the queue.
Uh, that's just a comment from, uh, it's just a chat that complaining about, uh, one month is not enough time to.
Oh, but, and, but we should say this has been going on for, for a year. So it's been a recurring agenda item. We have a report from, um, a, a town committee, Deb Dodge was on that committee there. Um, there was, there have been multiple presentations to the select board over years. Um, drafts of proposed ordinances. This has been on the agenda many, many times. And we've been I've gotten a fair amount of criticism that I actually think has been somewhat reasonable that the select board has just been too afraid. We've just kicked the, not too afraid, but we've let, we've let the can be kicked down the road. Um, and so it has been, it has been brought up a lot. And what we did is we said, you know what, we're going to do an ordinance that really isn't even an ordinance. It doesn't regulate, doesn't stop anybody from doing anything. Um, and a valid criticism might be that what, you know, what's the point? But the point is to, is to count them. That's all we're doing is counting because we haven't agreed on other things. So it's a very minor, minor, minor step in comparison to all of the things that have been discussed on select board agendas over the past, you know, several years.
Well put, Allison, well put. Um, um, Mark, we got terminated. Do you have one question? I'd like you to make one more statement, then we're going to move on. Mark?
No, that's fine.
Go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, uh, with, I don't think we have any other hands raised, so I'll close the, um, uh, public hearing portion of this discussion, revert to select board deliberation. Um, select board. Uh, Taylor?
Um, yeah, to me, this makes, this makes sense. I understand the concern about, um, the language, but I think the intent is very clear. The, the discussion about short-term rentals is not a new one by any means. In fact, if anything, we're probably farther behind on that discussion than a lot of communities are in the area. Um, my, my thought is that, um, you know, I really have some burning questions that I would like to have answered. That data can provide us about how short-term rentals might be affecting our neighborhoods. Um, whether that's good or bad. Um, but until we have the information, we really can't make informed decisions. And I think this is a reasonable way to do that. Um, again, the intent not to be onerous or burdensome to people, but um, to gather information and make sure we have contact info, um, so we know what's out there. Uh, so I'm supportive of it.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, I just, I had one comment. Um, we're just putting it on the warrant, so the town gets to vote on this ordinance, you know, and they'll be the final deciders of whether this is fair or not. And I think that's what I like about the town. Uh, town style of government is that the public, that the whole community gets to vote on it. And I think that's important. Uh, and that said, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm sure we can always have this go, discussion after the motion.
Um,
Godra, please.
Can I just make one more point? Something like this, it would never be appropriate for it to sit in the zoning ordinance. The only time this would touch the zoning ordinance is if the select board and then the townspeople made a decision that there were certain zones where you did not want to allow short-term rentals or, um, or start to call them something else. Um, but yeah, if you wanted to create a definition about short-term rentals and exclude them from certain zones or put certain rules around them in certain zones, that's the only time something, you know, anything touching on short-term rentals would go in the zoning ordinance. For any sort of system of registering, licensing, anything like that, it would have to sit in the police ordinance. Any other business-type activity that we have in the town sits in the police ordinance. So I just want to be very clear that this is not a backdoor way of trying to get around the planning board. This is the normal course of business for any of this. We just did it with the marijuana licensing. Um, you know, we did it with the, um, I forgot what else it was recently. But
Sovereignty?
Yes, yep, sovereignty. So anything like that, that's, this is appropriate place for it to sit.
I would agree. And I would point to, uh, I'll have a little bit of Allison said, Nick, Allison, Jen, actually could remind me the exact time. I think it was almost a year and a half, about two years when we had some lodging lines.
Exactly.
They're obviously invested interest from the logical lines, but in that process, they did a lot of work and I saw the, uh.
Many, many meetings and discussions, yeah.
Savannah, Georgia, and all these other towns, they brought in the, uh, what they'd done with, uh, well, S T R as a topic. And every one of them started with quantifying whether they had a problem or not. I'm trying to.
Exactly.
How big it was. So.
Their software.
Maybe we've been too close to it and, uh, haven't discussed that. But we have discussed it, it's like, we've had presentations. It's one of the, frankly, my biggest frustrations is how to get the public more engaged in what we're doing month to month and year to year, uh, uh, before it becomes something like this where we're putting on the warrant. But to Mark's point, where the public is going to vote, whether they up or down, this is not a select for decision. It's a, it's a voter decision. Back to that end, Mark, go ahead.
I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, amend the, uh, can police ordinance to add part one unhoseded short-term rental registration.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion?
That's the motion that we need, or do we just?
Uh, the, the motion to put it on the, the warrant, sorry.
That's what should be the motion for the warrant. And do you agree with that, Taylor? You second that?
Yes.
Motion made, second discussion, further discussion, roll call, Jenna?
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Bob, I five zero. Thank you very much. Um, but that, at this point, I will close the public hearing and revert to select board, uh, action items, the first of which is an approval of a Village Green application for the McGunta Cook Rowing fundraiser. I believe it's on May first. My recollection is correct. Uh, from ten to three thirty, I think I did look at, yeah. And that's what I saw. But any, any comments, board questions? Allison?
Let's talk to Taylor.
Okay, Taylor, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say if, um, there's not a presentation or anything, I'm, I support the organization and, um, I would move that we approve that request.
Allison?
I second it, but then also just want to address some of the comments that I've received. Um, so the um, interpretations of what should or shouldn't be done on the Village Green have varied over the years. We saw that with the picnic table discussion. The interpretation of commercial activity and what that means, I think, has been sort of at the heart of it. When you looked at the deed restrictions for this property, it prohibits um, commercial activity. And so that has been interpreted differently over the years. Um, I got several emails from people trying to remind me that fundraising was prohibited on the Village Green. And it, it's, it's a lot more nuanced than that. Um, and I think that that has been a s- a real stretch um, to say that. Um, I can recognize the desire to keep the village green, a place that is, um, you know, peaceful and certainly not overrun with vendors and is available. Um, you know, it was supposed to be a a peaceful, quiet green space, you know, in the middle of town. So um, there is a point, I think, that it could get too much if we were, there were, you know, fundraisers all the time happening there. And fundraisers, when people say fundraisers, I think there's often a thought of like somebody selling peanuts, um, you know, actively you know, selling things um, in the moment. That isn't um, what is being proposed for the McGonagall growing club. Um, it's a, it's a the opposite of a kickoff, but the, the grand finale of um, their rowing from, I'm not articulating it well, but it was cool that they're, they're gonna be out there rowing to simulate finishing some long row, which maybe was the whole country or the whole world or something. But um, it's it's more of just a, you know, a demonstration and it's not taking up the whole green. And I just wanted to say that I, I recognize, um, and this, you know, the select board does recognize that there are restrictions on that property when we're approving this, we're doing that with the knowledge that in the past, it's been sometimes more narrowly interpreted. Um, we had this whole conversation when the homeless coalition asked to um, do their thing, um, and we approved it. But um, I'm, I'm in, in support of it. And I think if we got to the point where the Village Green was just one long fundraiser, um, we would have to you know, look at, at maybe scaling it back, but that we're, we're not there and.
Okay, um, any other comments? Now, I would agree. I think the, I know the, um, the restrictions on the, on the Village Green, use the word commercial, uh, there's all kinds of extrapolations of what that term means. But to me, it's fundamentally in the legal world. It means when somebody is uh, trading or doing something for, for gain of some key words, gain. It, it may be financial, maybe otherwise. And this is, that's not what a fundraiser is, not for, not for profit. But I, especially to
Nonprofit organizations.
Mark, go ahead.
I was gonna say what Allison just said, it is a nonprofit organization and it's a celebration of I'm just reading what Allison was talking about. It's a celebration of um, currently working towards virtually rowing the coast of Maine, which is 5.5 million meters and hope to cross the finish line on the green on May first. Uh, they'll have participants rowing the whole time. So it's sort of a celebration of, of what they do.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Village Green application for the McGunta Cook Rowing fundraiser.
I think it was already moved and seconded.
Oh, right.
I'm sorry, I've got
And the date is May first, two thousand twenty.
My head had been rolling. Um, but uh, okay, the date is May first, correct? Thank you, Mark. Uh, with that, we'll, we'll call vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Four zero. Thank you very much. The second item is the approval request from McGunta Cook Rowing for banners for streetlights for Regatta Weekend on September eleventh. Um, I guess, um, just to start, uh, obviously we know what that is. Audra, is there any situation in something like this where we went up competing for the poll kind of thing going on on a Regatta Weekend?
Yeah, and you know, I wanna, I really wanna be supportive, but um, you know, we, we're get to a kind of situation where we're putting some pressure on Public Works to take up and put down banners. Um, so I, I, yeah, that's kind of my concern is that this is gonna, it, it could end up being something that's time consuming. And um, I believe, you know, Windjammer Weekend. Um, I'm gonna, I forget exactly when the dates are for that, but.
Well, this is, this, this and this, the Lyman Morse Regatta Weekend, Camden Regatta? Is that the same weekend?
I thought this was rowing.
Yeah, but this is for Regatta Weekend.
Yeah, but this is, it's different than Windjammer.
No, I know it's, but it's the Camden Regatta, is that correct? That's the Lyman Morse Camden Regatta.
No, it's for the rowing.
No, he's, I, I think, are you asking if that is the same weekend?
Yeah, yeah. The event they're planning for is Regatta Weekend on September eleventh. I thought that was
That was my, that was my interpretation as well.
And, and I believe, I don't have my dates, I may be totally wrong, but I thought Regatta Weekend was the Lyman Morse Camden Regatta Annual Event. Not Windjammer Weekend.
I'm looking right now, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Beth says Windjammer Weekend is leading up to Labor Day. I think that this kind of highlights the point. Maybe we don't need to settle it all right now, but we could just
At July thirtieth, thirty, thirty to thirty-one is the Regatta Weekend with Lyman Morse, according
I think they're having their own Regatta, but overall, it seems like this might be something we need to look at having a, dare I say, like a policy or a guidelines or I didn't quite real, I don't know why I didn't realize this. I didn't realize Public Works did it. Um, obviously, I guess town staff has to do it, but maybe we just need to have this kind of thing come back and figure out as requests start to increase, which it kind of seems like maybe they are. Need to figure out how to go about that. Maybe the Rotary Club wants to take over the responsibility.
Or somebody has to pay for the up and down of the public works, taking them up and down. It's all kinds, but I was
Oh, for a fee, yeah.
I was more concerned that we had, uh, and I was confused about the weekends, obviously, that, uh, Lyman Morse, somebody might want to be putting up some signs that weekend as well as Montguncook Rowing. And we're, we're gonna have to put the town staff in the middle and figure out who goes where. Um, I, I think there's gonna be a conflict there. It leads again to a policy question, Mark.
Uh, I believe we should table this until we have more information.
Yeah, I would have
I agree.
I agree. Okay, so we'll table this approval, um, for the, um, banners.
Um, Beth, for anybody really wondering about the Regattas, though, um, McGonagall growing holds their own Regatta at McGonagall Lake. Seems to be a known fact from Beth Ward.
Yeah, the word Regatta is what tripped me up. I was thinking Camden Regatta, so excuse me.
That's your, that's your bias there.
Yeah, that's my
Your, your harbor bias.
Sorry, I love the harbor. And I swim in the lake. Um, okay, we'll do that. Thank you. Um, we have a item C now, uh, approval of the renewal of the farmer's market license for the tanna. Comments, suggestions, Mark?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, the renewal of the farmer's market license for the tannery.
Okay. A motion made the second, Allison, you had your hand up and discussion.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna do the thing that Mark likes to do sometimes where I say, for the people listening at home, um, do we, are, are there changes to this? We want to go over the, just the basics. Is it the same thing? Um, I think since it's a topic of high interest, I would say maybe just a little.
Yeah, during this discussion period, we, we, on this, on this motion, we should talk about those things that um, whether there are any changes or, um, uh, do we want to this agreement? Um, we can still do it as part of this motion. And then have to reconstitute it, but um, but regarding fees, regarding schedule, uh, otherwise it's the same document we had last year, correct, Audra?
Yeah, no, no substantive changes. And we've also included the same um, COVID nineteen policies that were um, last year.
Same as last year.
And we also referenced, um, the state's farmer's market COVID guidelines, which were updated in November. So we actually have two, two things in there, that in the, in the agreement, and they're, they're happy with the agreement. And folks are okay with it.
W- where do we stand on the, we, we talked some last year about, um, SNAP benefits and then they sort of made a commitment to move in that direction. Um, I know it was helpful last year. Um, we had Mike here kind of speaking. I think there's been some leadership change there, maybe, or
There has. I can follow up with you on that, Allison. I know we did, we kept the same language in there that they need to work with the town. Um, and where possible, the licensee shall require farmers to accept them, is what that language is still the same. Can follow up with you so we can kind of plan for that as we move forward and at least get some data from them. If how you know, are they using, are people taking advantage of those benefits or not?
Well, because I think it was like where, what, what I heard was that some do and some don't, and they were hoping to make progress. Um, maybe having it be market-wide, but it would just it would be good to know whether any progress was made on their own or what if they're, um, it kind of feels like we're just leaving at the same exact spot as last year. Um,
I, I do think that the leadership change there, um, is probably pretty, really changed things, um, around for them, but I can again, certainly follow up with them and, and make that a priority. We could have this go for you know, the market's gonna start soon, so we can have this go for a month or something and we can get some more information if you want, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with them going forward, but I think it would, it would be great to hear more from the farmer's market. Maybe we could invite them sometime to just give a presentation about what they you know, what they do and sort of the vision and how, you know, the partnership with the town could be better or worse, or
In fact, I would go so far as to require they should come back to the select board and report on their success with SNAP and other things as well as their as well as the, um, number of vendors, what's, how's that tracking, those kinds of things. Not Jeremy, I don't know when that should be. Maybe it's, um, they don't open till May, correct?
Um, Saturday, May eighth is their first day.
Also, just the first of June, we get a report back from them to the Alright?
Sure.
Alright, a motion's made and seconded to, uh, approve the document is drafted. Unless you have any comments, we're gonna go for a roll call vote to Allison.
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Bob, that's me in a minute. Uh, Mark?
Hi.
Four zero. Thank you very much. Um, we have a, uh, an item here to appoint, um, Ms. Rosie Curtis, our current CEO, as licensed plumbing inspector. Uh, she's like, I believe she's qualified and made her passed everything. Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Rosie Curtis as a licensed plumbing inspector.
Second.
Motion made second, roll call, vote, Allison?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Love I four zero. Thank you. Um, next item is the approval of the agreement with Side Country Sports in the Camden Snow Bowl. Um, again, just general, Mark, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, uh, Allison, Jeremy, are there any changes in the agreement? I looked through it. I didn't
You're asking Allison?
I mean, excuse
Asking like Allison did, but to Jeremy, it was, it was shorthand for that.
Okay, my ears are broken already, so, okay. Do you want to comment on the agreement form? It seemed to be the last thing as it was last year.
That's correct.
Any other comments? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Side Country Sports and, and the Camden Snow Bowl between Side Country Sports and the Camden Snow Bowl.
Second.
Second.
Motion made the second, roll call, vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
I four zero. Thank you. Um, next item is we want to set a public hearing date for the, um, uh, review and approval of the mid-coast internet interlocal agreement for a warrant for the June ballot. Frankly speaking, the only date we have available is April twentieth FYI. So, um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, set the public hearing date for the mid-coast internet interlocal agreement, the June ballot, uh, for April twentieth.
Second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Motion made second, comments, Allison? Allison, do you have a comment? I just want to
I do, imagine that. Um, uh, at some point before too long, it seems like we should get Deb or somebody just to even, even if we did like a little YouTube video that we put separately, um, I don't think, it's pretty clear that select word meetings aren't like the absolute best way of getting information out to the public. Um, but we should do something so that, um, there's a place you can go to hear the, basically the, you know, the best sort of summarized version of the, the, the argument for doing this. Um,
Good idea.
Yeah, why are we doing this? Why does it matter? Why now? Um,
I think it's an excellent idea. Between now and the twentieth, that would be good to maybe have Matt Siegel and Deborah Hall do some kind of a little mini video we could play on the twentieth, just, uh, or have available online. So people can understand why we're doing this very important step toward, um, you know, the broadband initiative. I agree with that. There's, the agreement, as you know, is, is in our packet. Um, just for record purposes, so it's a, it, but that doesn't mean, to your point, now it doesn't
Nobody wants to read that. Um,
It's kind of, it's mind-numbingly legal, but yeah, we can do that.
I mean, even if, uh, it was sort of working well, the, we just did these conversations about the river and we're gonna do more of them. And I found that people were much more inclined to come to one of those where they could listen or they could listen later and then they have questions. Whereas when we put that on the select word agenda, it didn't, we didn't have anybody show up to sit through the whole select word meeting so that they could ask a couple of questions about the river, same, same topic, but, um, you know, if we just did a little something like that, maybe.
Yep, Mark, let's, let's, you and I grab the charge to get that done before the next select board meeting.
Yeah, but next, uh, before the next select board meeting, I think we have a, uh, uh, group meeting for that, for the
Wednesday.
And I'll make sure that, uh,
I think it's a good idea. It is there's a lot of need to this topic. They've done a tremendous amount of work and they, not to least, which they need to be mapped and Siegel and, uh, and Deborah Hall and yourself, Mark and Jeremy and others, um, the phenomenal amount of work into this. I'm so impressed how far they've gotten so fast. I would never expect it to be ready for it. It is for a warrant to take the first major step in being able to get funds um, for broadband, you know, coming from the feds and the state and every place else. Um, that's the primary thrust this is all about. But yeah, we'll do that. It's a good idea. I like it.
There was that editorial that was, um, you know, a historic opportunity. Even, it's, I mean, it's true, it is, so.
I agree, I agree. Um, so anyway, we, we will, um, we will get, love to get that done. Um, next is the, um,
Bob, I think we, did we vote on the, uh, did we vote on it? Or just the discussion?
Just discussed it. We just discussed a roll call, Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
I four zero for the setting the date for April, April the twentieth. And, um, let's see, we have to, we really need to set a date, um, recommending, um, having a separate date for a workshop really for the select board to review uh, the FY twenty-two budget rather than doing it in a select board meeting. Uh, that's been the proposal here. So I think we did this last year, if you recall, we did it by Zoom, as I recall. And our fir-, one of our first Zoom meetings, it was quite a lengthy meeting because there was a lot on the table with COVID lurking. But I think this is probably a good recommendation to the board to set a workshop date to do this. And hopefully, now, Audra, just to be clear. Um, you'll need this approval from us prior to the print date for, um, the, the, the warrant for the secret ballot, which is the week of April twentieth.
Yes, and you'll need to, on April twentieth, you'll need to have a public hearing for the, um, the warrant, and it'll include the FY twenty-two budget. So you'll need to have the review done.
Right, because we currently have the budget from the budget committee piece. Um, now we need a select board piece. So I think it's wise for us to choose a date. Um, and within the next week or so, actually, because we're already at April sixth, we got another week and a half, we got a week and a half. But next week, probably sometime, if we can squeeze out some time for that workshop, Mark, go ahead.
I was gonna suggest, uh, our off day next Tuesday, the thirteenth. In the same time, we normally have a select board meeting.
In the same time, we normally have a select board meeting.
Any other ideas? I know it's it's gonna, um, the two things. One is the the time. I don't see why we couldn't do it a little bit earlier unless you object. That's fine, but like six o'clock.
But I mean.
Say what?
I would really prefer to do it during working hours. I would also. I don't know how to best handle the the logistics of which town staff members would be there. But the experience of having to be silent as select board members during the budget committee meetings was fine, I'm adaptable, but it meant that we we don't get the opportunity to be able to ask questions of the department heads and really dive into the budgets. And I understand that a lot of us some do that in certain areas year round, but it would, I think, have, I guess, first of all, just having it during the day would make it more possible to have other department heads available as needed. And then I also just wanted to say that that I would. You know, I do have quite a few questions or comments.
Heads are aware that there is going to be a workshop with the select board and that they're all going to be expected to attend to answer.
Last year, I recall, we did it ten o'clock in the morning. As I recall, we had a Zoom. We were kind of backed up to the wall. That's what happened. But yeah, I am. I mean, my personal preference would be daytime hours too. And I know we all have to do and work and but especially Taylor, you've got, you know, your schedule is all in mind for all of us.
Yeah, I mean, I can do any time of day, but I would prefer it during working hours as well if we can.
So I think, well, to me, I would prefer the fourteenth, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stick a pin in the wall for for the fourteenth in the afternoon. But if that doesn't work, we all, I can move things around for the thirteenth. Taylor.
Either one is works for me.
Mark.
Uh, I would prefer the thirteenth, but I can depending on what time I can make the.
What what time would work for you in the afternoon, Mark?
Uh, it needs to be earlier because I have stuff that evening. I have meetings starting that evening.
You're talking about two thirty?
Two thirty doesn't work because I have to pick up my son at school at two forty five. So.
Three thirty.
What happened to ten?
What?
I can't do.
Oh, sorry.
Well, hold on. What what day I gotta I gotta work through the days. Today was today was a red day. So red, white, red, white, red, white. I read on the fourteenth, I cannot do earlier than 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 three thirty because I have back and forth in school.
On the fourteenth. Allison, what are you?
So I it. Before three thirty is my kids get picked up at at three and I'm just away from them a lot because of these meetings. So it would be better for me to do it before then. I believe that on Wednesday, Wednesday is normally early release, but I think they've canceled it for. So I could do either the thirteenth or the fourteenth before three P M. Does that line up with anything that was said by anybody else?
Are you saying starting before three P M?
Finishing before three P M.
Marcus, sounds like it's a problem to you.
On the third, on the fourteenth, I cannot do earlier than three thirty between work and and open campus. I can't do it. So the thirteenth I can do earlier.
Okay, look at the thirteenth. I'll change my schedule and and what time is earlier upon to you all on Tuesday the thirteen. And just be happy. It's not right.
I can start anytime after eight thirty.
After three thirty?
After eight thirty.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I can't hear.
I mean, after eight forty five because I have to drop off and then.
Look at an early afternoon time period of like one o'clock.
Uh, as long as we're done by two thirty, I can do one o'clock.
Okay, we'll have to do something. But.
Eleven A M.
Sure.
Eleven's good for me.
Hey, I'm Taylor. You said eleven, eleven A M. Is okay for you?
Yep.
Eleven O K is okay for Allison.
Is that which day are we working on? Yes, but.
Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Okay.
All right, let's peg and Audrey, is that okay with you and staff? I mean, you guys are in the, you know, the line like here. I know you usually said you prefer Tuesdays, but this will be a Tuesday, but it won't be Tuesday evening. So Tuesday.
I mean, you are going to get no complaint from staff about doing it during business hours.
So let's let's peg Tuesday, April thirteenth at eleven A M. Workshop for the select board on the budget to have a discussion. And we'll move toward and approving whatever comes out of that on the twentieth agenda. Agreed?
These are, uh, just to be clear about how we're gonna format that as the intent to go through the, you know, yes, sort of quickly through the entire budget with all staff members.
That could be rather, that that's not going to work in a couple of hours. I think we did last year was we did go through every department and where there were questions that we had specifically. Since we then brought in Mr. X and Ms. Y and said, we don't understand why the budget is this. And they explained that rather than going through a formal presentation. We know the. That's my reck.
Available to answer questions.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so the date for the select board workshop of the FY twenty two budget will be Tuesday, April thirteenth at eleven A M. We'll set up of one of these webinars. Great. Last time on the approval list is the proposed codification services for general code E sixty. Audrey, what you give us what the code is for the code?
So I think some of you might be aware of the fact that the Camden Charter requires that we have a code of ordinances and that's something that is never really. It's just, you know, historically, we've all and and even going going back before Janus, we sort of inherited a bunch of sort of loose ordinances that aren't codified into one code of ordinances. So this helps address that problem as well as the problem of just the incredible amount of difficulty in terms of looking anything up in our ordinances, particularly the zoning ordinance. And just to give you an example, I had a business owner, I think it was the owner of the Winward House that came in and they had a simple question about signs and wanted to get a copy of the section of the zoning ordinances that had requirements around signage in it. I know where I know where that is, so I'm not by any means a layman. And it probably took me an embarrassed like fifteen minutes, which is a real embarrassing amount of time to scroll, scroll, scroll through our zoning ordinance in a PDF document to find it. So I just don't think that we're doing the public any favors by you know, presenting our ordinances the way that we currently do there. It's difficult to use. It's hard to find. You know, trying to get, you know, members of the public who very infrequently would ever need to use our ordinances. It's just impossible for them to find anything. And I I think this service is going to go a long ways in making it easier and more user friendly for everyone and also solving the problem of you know, the code of ordinances and organizing everything in a way that's more manageable. So that's really the proposal for this service. We've got plenty of funds available in the contingency for the startup cost of getting this. You know, up and going. So there's, you know, a lot of work that general code, which is the the company that has E code three sixty that they need to do to get our ordinances to a state where they can be you know, put into a digital format that's easily searchable. So that's the the initial cost of, I believe it was eleven thousand six hundred. And then, you know, we don't have to make a decision right away about the the yearly subscription service we want, whether it be the basic or the advanced, but I think the basics about nine hundred advances nineteen hundred. You know, there's a lot of municipalities in Maine that use this. And if if you've ever gone to their website and and tried to look up their ordinances, it's much more user friendly and accessible for members of the public. So that's that's I'm proposing that, you know, we invest in this service because I think it's going to be good for everyone, whether, you know, it's it's staff, select board members or men members of the general public.
I mean, that's just in summary, these kind of systems basically are setting up a table of contest contents with codes in per content so that a person can look up the code and then punch on that and be taken to the documents, correct?
Correct. And also, you know, we've got a bit of a, you know, we ask a lot from Janice in sort of managing these ordinance amendments and updates. We're very lucky that, you know, that we have Janice and she's so diligent and Janice, I mean, I've never seen anyone that makes as few mistakes as Janice. But it's a it's a big job on top of everything else that she does. And it's, you know, it's not typically something that, you know, would be expected of someone in her position because she has a lot of other responsibilities. So this service would also take over that responsibility and it would be much easier to sort of look back and see how things have changed and why they've changed over the years. So it's also the record keeping around ordinance amendments.
Allison, did you hand up?
I mean, I can't believe that they're gonna do this for eleven thousand dollars or whatever at eleven.
That was my comment.
I was like, have they looked at ours in particular? So, I mean, I think we should like definitely sign do that as as soon as possible. And since we, there was some budget committee discussion about the use of the contingency and whether we're using it and whether it's for COVID. And you know, having thought a lot about sort of what it means to like, is this COVID related or is it not? And, you know, what do they want us to be using this money for? I guess I think it's entirely appropriate and that it is reflective of maybe something that should have been done long before COVID, actually most certainly should have. But it's like the digitization of services and making things available more easily online is something that people have wanted for a long time. But COVID has forced us to actually try to produce in a, you know, a more effective way. And so I think we have heard a lot that people want to be able to participate in this way and they don't want right now to understand the ordinances. It's more than just Janice having to be able to put them all in documents or whatever. You you basically need a mentor to help you through this. You you need, it wasn't until, you know, I would actually come down to the town office and sit in the planning office and sit there with Jeannie and say, oh, well, if you you really have to look in the definition for this and you have to, it's just so terrible. And it and it requires a lot of face to face paper communication time and you can't even wa and for a while you couldn't even walk into our planning office. And so tho those types of things were more difficult for people than ever because the only way people have been able to get some like work through some of this has been like face to face counseling over the years. So I would just want to say I I think making it making town government more nimble and less dependent on, you know, individual physical face to face interactions for everything is is, you know, is part of what this fund was supposed to be used for.
I have to remark.
Um, I think it's an excellent idea. And in looking through the the paperwork that is provided in the packet, the fact that they do this all over Maine. Uh, so people looking in Maine will be very comfortable with. You know, a lot of construction people, whatever, be very comfortable with the process because obviously be pretty much as similar as everywhere else. So when we're ready, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Audrey to do a contract and the first solution for eleven thousand four hundred ninety five dollars.
Can I add something?
One second. Can I get a second? I hear a second.
Second.
All right, most made second discussion. Go ahead, Jerry. Nick.
I just wanted to add, Mark, there's an additional two hundred that I think would for the premium E code rather than the standard. An additional two hundred dollars.
Okay, then I'll I'll amend the motion to eleven thousand six hundred ninety five dollars.
Thank you.
Second test. Uh, thanks. Thanks, Jeremy.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Hopefully we can have permits all online and in some kind of a system sometime too.
Whatever. That'd be a dream. A good dream.
Not far.
Roll call vote. Allison.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, I four zero. Thank you very much. That's a what a great, so good to feel this electricity. Camden, we're kind of behind the curve.
I thought this would take a lot longer. I'm like, I can't believe this is on an agenda tonight. It's only gonna cost eleven thousand dollars.
No, no, no. I think it's a phenomenal idea.
I I think Janice is on, Janice is not on camera right now, but I think she's probably jumping up and down on her.
She's on the desk.
It's probably gonna be miserable for everybody for a little bit though, because they're gonna have to work with this company to know it's not gonna be bad.
No, pretty, pretty seamless. They've reviewed everything we have already.
They do all the finicky annoying.
I'll believe it when I see it.
Well, thanks. That's great. Moving on to the, I believe it's the last approval item, which is the discussion approval, the process for reviewing the Lyman Morse proposal in our packets we have. Information from Audra and Bill Kelly, I'm sorry, from Jeremy to Audra and Bill Kelly in terms of the two major phases of of the the project development is or phase one being the town meeting approval phase. And the second phase being the complicated planning and permitting approval phase. And as I understand it, this process we're discussing today is only the approval process for phase one, which would again be the town meeting approval phase, correct?
Correct.
So, okay, just want to get that, keep that clear. And so, Audrey, Jeremy, do you want to lead into what the con, we obviously have read it. But what are the, what are the, what's the primary objective and thrust here?
So there's three major things that would need to go to town meeting for approval as part of this sort of phase one. So that's the harbor ordinance amendments. And Lyman Morse has sort of a, you know, a packet of those different amendments that would need to be made to our current harbor and waterways ordinance. The second part would be amendments to the downtown Tiff district. And we've got, you know, those that are proposed by Lyman Morse. I would also say that this is, you know, an opportunity for the town to look at our own desired amendments to that Tiff district as well. If we're going to open it up, this is, you know, we we certainly want to look at, you know, things that we want to do that might be independent of this. But that could also be intertwined with what Lyman Morse is proposing because, you know, the whole purpose of that Tiff district is, you know, financing public projects in addition to any, you know, sort of private infrastructure or property improvements. And also any license or operating agreement between the town and Lyman Morse that might be necessary for their facility. And a lot of this has to do with the fact that where they're proposing to do their, you know, Marina project, it abuts steamboat landing. You know, so there's some some opportunity to make sure that, you know, the way that that is operated, you know, doesn't impede, of course, on our infrastructure or enhances it. You know, and and this might give us some additional level of, you know, sort of control over that area. So anyway, those are sort of the three major things that would need to go to voters for approval. So in order to get there, because there's, you know, a lot that's proposed and a lot that needs to be done. And, you know, different groups that have different responsibilities over that before it ultimately gets to the select board and then to voters. You know, sort of, if you're looking at the harbor and waterways ordinance, those proposed ordinance amendments would have to go to the harbor committee for a recommendation that then goes to the select board. So, you know, I think that before we know how long that's gonna take, it would be good to set up a meeting of the harbor committee, have them do sort of a preliminary overview and come up with their own schedule for how they want to do this. But also it would be good to have, you know, the select board's input for sort of the interface that you would like to have with the harbor committee as they go through this. So, you know, by the time a recommendation comes to you, you all feel well informed as to what their discussion was and, you know, sort of the intent behind their recommendations. So.
Audrey, continue. Do you have more?
Well, Allison had a question.
Allison, you have a question? Allison, you have a question?
Yeah. So, uh, we haven't seen any of those. Is there, are you saying there's a list already uh, that could go to the harbor committee, a list of requested?
Yes. They've, they've taken the existing harbor and waterways ordinance and sort of, you know, redlined it and included, um, proposed amendments that they, uh, feel necessary for their project.
That was drafted by Lyman Morse.
Yeah.
So in terms of defining what the, because I think this really gets to the heart of it, looking at, I like the document that you drafted, this is what we should be doing, agreeing on what the process will be in order for, um, for me to be able to say, yeah, I think it's a go, let's just have the harbor committee dive into this or that. Um, I think as soon as possible, we need to make all of those documents need to be available because it's easiest for me to know, you know, especially what type of input um, we need from the harbor committee. And I'm sure they'll have, a lot of it will be, um, stuff that they will come up with on their own. Um, but there might be additional things that we want them to focus on and I won't know what those things are until we can look at these documents. So maybe in much the same way that we did it with the tannery. Um, there needs to be a, you know, a sort of information center where these documents are available. Um, because there are, people have a lot of questions or a lot of, even just what Bob just said about the phases. I don't even know what that, what that means. This is just phase one. Uh, to me, that document, that was quite a few phases of things. I don't know. Um.
Well, I think to your point, um, I think it is important, uh, we, we, we just put committees on hiatus because we're trying to define, you know, and there's a couple of elements to that. One is, um, certainly like the harbor committee to take a look at certain things, but I also want to put a schedule to it. Uh, because I think it's important, not just to, you know, put them in a, you know, in a position where we're not sure exactly what we're supposed to be commenting to the board for about uh, these changes to our, we're not, I don't think we'd be asking the committee to approve or disapprove of anything, but but detailing the complications of those changes that, that, that they foresee, that could be helpful to the select board. But there should be a schedule attached with also, and especially because the select board will be, I'm sorry, the, the harbor committee will be a little bit short, um, short because the chairman is going to have to recuse himself in his discussions. Whether it is more than a perceived conflict of interest there.
So their, I mean, their role in this is really well defined by the ordinance. So it's very specific. They, you know, we're going to, we're going to give them the, um, proposed changes that Lyman Morse has asked for. And they're going to make a recommendation that goes to the select board.
Maybe what we could do is, uh, issue those documents to us, Audra, and on top of that, a, uh, draft, um, expectations scope for the harbor committee.
Yes. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to put all that information on the website in one place. And then, you know, based on the outcome and discussion that we have tonight around this, uh, Jeremy and I will send that information to the harbor committee and say, you know, your role in this is to review and provide a recommendation to the select board. Um, you know, if you could schedule a meeting to begin that review and let us know how long you believe it's going to take.
Yeah, we have to, we have to keep the schedule. Otherwise we could be talking about this six months from now.
Right.
Not, not because they're slow, just because that's a fact of life.
Right. And I'll, I'll do the same thing that I've done with, for instance, budget committee meetings where all, all their meetings will also be posted on that same area on the website so that everybody can sort of keep track of, you know, what they've been discussing.
Allison, you had your hand up.
So the harbor committee, uh, requirement of the ordinance is that any changes to the harbor ordinance are first reviewed by the harbor committee.
Right.
Yes.
So I guess to me that would mean that in, is it possible that in addition to the changes that, um, Lyman Morse is requesting, that what I, I guess what I'm concerned about is missing an opportunity for us to have said that you know, Lyman Morse wants these or those changes, but we would like the harbor committee to also review, you know, X, Y, or Z change. Um, and if that needs to ha, and then if we end up doing that later and then we're told, oh, this needs to go back to the harbor committee first. Um, is it even changes that are generated by the select board or would need to be, it's not just because it's a, you know, a company asking for the change that it needs to go to the harbor committee, right? It's anything.
That's correct.
Um, so maybe we could also be for our next agenda. We want to also be telling them, I, I don't know if they're certain things like sea la, I'm thinking sea level, um, and building in the flood zone and things like that. Um.
Yes. Yeah, we should.
I don't know. It's all complicated. And so I don't, I don't want the end result of this tangled thing to be that we still haven't addressed, um, building in the path of sea level rise and how that would or wouldn't be addressed in the harbor ordinance as opposed to the zoning ordinance. I'm not sure, but, um.
Those, those things are not contained within the harbor ordinance, Allison. That'd be solely in the shoreline zoning or in the land, in the zoning ordinance and shoreline zoning.
Okay. What about things like, um, the materials from which, uh, seawalls can be made or?
That's a good question. That's not in the zoning ordinance. If that would be something I think that would belong in the harbor and waterway ordinance.
So for me, we're looking at massive redevelopment of the harbor. And so trying to figure out where the best opportunity is to make sure that that's done in the most environmentally, um, sensitive way would be.
Does, does the harbor ordinance, I don't recall saying anything about the, for example, the construction materials of a, of a dock.
It probably doesn't, but it may.
No, it probably doesn't, but that would be the, if you're going to do something, that would be the location to have it. Um.
Yeah. And I'm just, I'm just, I don't, and I don't, again, I'm just wondering whether it's an ordinance or, or, or the, or the shoreline.
All right. Remember, we're also.
Get out of like the detail around this. What I would recommend, um, is that, you know, we're going to make all those documents public. Um, you know, you'll, you'll all be certainly the, the first or the same as the public to know about it. Um, so if you could all review everything and sort of come up with a list of questions, and this will apply to the next thing we're going to talk about, which is the Tiff district. Come up with sort of a list of questions that when we, you know, officially engage the harbor committee and ask them about, um, you know, reviewing and providing recommendations, we're also giving them some, um, notes on what the select board would particularly like them to pay attention to.
That's fair. Well, and you will also have to filter and make sure that my comments or somebody's belong in that ordinance and not someplace else. That's what we need.
Absolutely. So that's, yeah, that'll be Jeremy and my job to, you know, kind of.
Okay. But to that end, again, to, to the, um, the first step would, to me, again, the committee needs to receive all of this and then give us a schedule. So there's got to be some schedule we have to maintaining something here. But this, the Tiff, as well as the, um, as well as the, uh, the agreement between us and Lyman Morse. I'd, I'd like to hear it, not in that one, but a, as we go forward, the, the schedules related to when those things are needed to support the next phase, big phase, which is the planning approval and all the details of the project phase, right?
Hold on. What do you mean by this, this, this phase being the little phase as opposed to the big phase?
It's not little. It's, it's.
No, there's, okay. I guess the way to think about phases is the first phase is everything, reviewing everything that needs to go to town meeting for approval.
Right.
The second phase is, um, assuming that it is approved, which is a big assumption. They would still need to go through, um, you know, the permitting, uh, planning board review and then local, state and federal permitting.
Right.
Okay. So I see this, sorry.
Go ahead, Allison.
Um, I, I guess I see it in the opposite way that I'm, that, that you're framing it. Bob, I see this as the big one and the next one is the little. So to me, this is not the time that this is the only opportunity for the town to weigh in on the direction of where they want the harbor to go, where they want the community to go, what they want to be allowed and what they don't want to be allowed. So it's, there is, this is where it matters. The rest of it matters for the details of of their project, should it be approved. But this is where we're deciding what should be allowed and what shouldn't. Um, and so I, I agree about the, we're going to need to figure out a schedule, but we can't allow the schedule to be determined entirely by, uh, you know, a desired construction schedule from a, an applicant, because this is a really big change. I mean, this is a really big project, um, that involves a, a lot. So I think we'll have to say to the harbor committee, how much, you know, how much time are they going to, going to need? Um, and we can ask them to do it. You know, it's, I don't know. I thi, I'm a, I, I don't want to just have this, the message from the select board be like, you need to rush through this and get it done so that we can make a decision and.
No, I, my comment about schedule is not about rushing. It's just about knowing the, the carbon committee to tell us how much, once they realize the scope, how much time they think it will take to get back to the select board. That's where you best schedule. Or how long it will take for this, to put some flesh on the bone of the Tiff thing. That's no small chunk either. Uh, like, like Kevin, my mind, what's the, what's the, what are we talking about? Three months, six months, a year? I don't know. I mean, let's, let's, let's try to, everything, everything has, you know, bandwidth and schedule. I don't care what it is. But this is the big piece and small piece totally relevant. It is what it is. And you're right, the town has to approve these three big elements. And they're all each on their, on their own right, pretty big. Uh, the harbor ordinance, again, the Tiff and this agreement between the parties, some of these can go in parallel, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I see this, I see this working, um, in that you're going to have the harbor committee and CDEC doing their jobs sort of at the same time. You know, as the, the review evolves, there might be crossover between the two. Um, and there might be the need for the select board to jump in at any stage in this because this is big. And, um, everybody does have to, and it's iterative. So everybody's going to have to be across every point of this in order to make an informed decision. So you know, I, there's a lot of, until we get everybody sort of at a point where they've seen everything, they've had a chance to read it and they're at a point where they're beginning to discuss it, we're not going to quite know um, exactly how this is going to evolve. And I would say this, it's going to be quite similar to, um, you know, like when CDEC was reviewing the tannery proposals.
Exactly.
You know, that we, we were respectful of the fact that, um, you know, they needed to go through their process and they had their timeframes and they had their um, different elements that they were looking at and trying to get answers to. And it's going to be very similar with the harbor committee and the, and with CDEC.
Yep. Yeah. See, that's same thing. They should have a, just with their opinion of a rough timeframe is, you know, but again, these, these activities going not totally, but some in parallel. So that, that determines, it's not head on tail. Allison, go ahead.
Um, I thought it was a, a good thing to point out in that document that, um, neither committee needs to be holding public hearings or that sort of thing. Um, that the value of, um, and, you know, this has been talked about a little bit before, and I've watched some harbor committee meetings and there was a, a discussion about, you know, bringing in, you know, trying to get opinions from the public and and I, and I love that idea and think it's i- important, but I, um, it, what the, I think to remind them that the role of the committees is that they're a, a select group of people that we all, you know, decided like, hey, we hear lots of things on the street from everybody. Um, we get contacted by, you know, just all the broad spectrum of the public on this all the time. But sometimes we really want a level of, of expertise that we sought out and we are seeking out the input from you know, the people on this committee. And so I, I would hope that you can kind of remind the committees to stay focused on, on valuing their own perspective. That doesn't mean they don't talk about it and get, you know, but, but what I really want is not what they think other people think as, as much as, um, you know, their expertise and what, you know, their recommendation to us. And, you know, we can weigh that against all the jet, we will, we'll kind of do the job of the general public having the opportunity to come and speak and make sure that they, there is an opportunity for that, but that the committee is kind of like a level of expertise.
Right. And I, I think, you know, we said the same thing with the tannery review that, you know, there'll be opportunity for public compu, uh, comment and input and engagement, but that's really the job of the select board. And the job of the committees is to, based on the expertise that they have, review what they've been asked to review and provide a recommendation.
So in summary, then, well, what Allison, I agree with what you said. Um, so we'll give up on the website. We'll make our comments on other possible changes on the harbor ordinance, if not another. Um, the, the charter for the CDEC is to begin immediately, um, on the review of Tiff and blah, blah. Again, they should be requested to comment on what they see as timeframe. Uh, I think it's, it's appropriate. And then the, uh, what about the schedule for the development of the agreement between the parties?
I would recommend that you, you sort of, you wait until you have, um, recommendations from, uh, the harbor committee and CDEC because I think that that there might be, um, you know, items that they bring up and recommend that will be important for that. We can certainly, you know, get together, um, like a bare bones draft agreement. Um, but I do think that, you know, there'll be a lot of important input from CDEC and the harbor committee's process that's going to inform any agreement.
Yeah, I would agree.
Operating and.
I would agree.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to get together. I'm a little nervous about also the impact of your staff time on this and kind of defining at which point staff time is going to be useful or not useful. We just went through this whole thing with, um, you know, the committees trying to be more focused. And I agree that this is obviously something that is demanding of, of, and worthy of town staff time, but it could paralyze town staff. It could be everything that we work on if, um, between CDOC agendas and the harbor committee and, um, and so I, I would just say that, I mean, that's Audra's discretion, obviously, but that from the select board standpoint, I don't think that, I think we need to be told at, to what extent this is impacting the ability to do other things. And it goes with all, you know, all of the different projects that get taken on, but I don't think that this should be taking up massive amounts of staff time.
I mean, I'm just going to say straight up, I, I have a bit of unease about hitting the timeframe that Lyman Morse has asked for.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not possible. I mean, I don't think.
We'll certainly try to be responsive, but I, I just want to put that out there from the very beginning that, um.
And that, and that's okay to, to have that opinion. I could probably share it with you, but, um, as we go forward, I would expect we, I would suggest the select board would want to hear if there are any stress being caused, uh, to staff or anything else that, uh, in, in a recommendation to, you know, address these schedule issues that we may have to push back on. And I understand that it's good to be, I'm glad they're aggressive. They're putting a lot of money into the world, but they hope to put a lot of money into this. Among other things they're trying to do, it's a great initiative, but some, at some point, uh, you know, intentions hit, hit the wall.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's in, in order to be able to get, they, they need people to vote on it. And so it's, it's to get a, but it's not just like whether we can get all the work done or, or not, but it's to get a a supportive vote, it takes getting the whole select board and these committees to the point where they're worth supportive. Um.
And getting the public comfortable that there was a rigorous process where all elements of this were thoroughly discussed, reviewed.
Yeah.
Um, and understood and everybody had a chance to express their opinion and provide input.
We have huge challenges trying to communicate just the things we're doing right now, even tonight to.
I don't even know enough. I couldn't even, it's not even communicating. I can't even, I don't even have.
Well, the amounts can be digested by the public here in terms of what they have to vote on is big. And, you know, the Tiff, the agreement, uh, and the, uh, the, the harbor board is just like, um, do we vote on all these at once? Or do we do them in pieces? They're all kind of connected. That's really dangerous and difficult, you know, but I.
People need to know at what stage they have the opportunity to vote, know like when they can stop things like, if you don't want there to be a, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, Allison. One minute. Mark.
One question I have about this, don't they have a deadline they have to meet in order to get the grants that they need to get to do this?
Yes.
So, you know, we're going to have to try and find a middle ground for that. It's just, it's going to be tough.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge, but there, yeah, there are, that's why I talk about, that's what brings to mind schedule. Schedule is always important. And just sometimes you have to say, this schedule cuts real impossibilities and we have to address them. We have to put them to the table. Um, but yeah, it's, it's gonna be a challenge for it. Go ahead, Allison.
I guess that is one question that, um, I would like answered sort of right off the bat. And maybe it needs to take town staff time to do it is the, this, the deadline that has been referenced, um, needs to be, in order for it to dictate really anything that we do, it needs to be really well defined and explained. And who's the deadline coming from? What, um, because these grants are given out all the time. Um, there are lots of them that are lingering. And they don't get taken away usually. So I was a little bit alarmed, that, that didn't quite make sense to me, this idea that it's, um, somehow this grant, um, which is exactly the same as some neighboring communities have, why, uh, this one would be expiring? So just understanding the dynamics of that, because that'll be a big part of what we have to explain to, to committees. Um, and it's clear that none of us understand whether that deadline is, is.
Yeah, that's why schedules are often Audrey and Jeremy, because Lyman Morse has a schedule. I guarantee it. And it's, it's maybe on paper, but it's in their heads. It probably works back from some of the grant things. And you start comparing those notes, you could, that the red flag is gonna jump up. So I think that would be one of the activities, Jeremy and Audrey, you wanna get into with, with them is to, uh, what do they expect from us and when? Have they told us that?
I mean, they, they have told us that. I guess it's just a question of, you know, is there any, what is the plan? We are, like we said, we are going to endeavor to be responsive and, um, you know, meet these timeframes. But what is their plan if we're not able to do that?
Okay. They told us in the meeting, what was it? It was, uh, September or something. So that's not gonna happen. That, that involves holding a special town meeting. I mean, I'm not gonna say it's not gonna happen, but it would, not my choice, but that's. Yeah, and, and, and it might be sabotaging the whole thing by trying to push it through in that way if that isn't a really hard deadline. Um, and, and, you know, what, what would be the consequences of missing that deadline? So maybe making sure everybody understands that, because I think way Audrey said is, is right, that we need to be able to, the, the public needs to feel confident that this was really, really well reviewed, um, and that there was a rigorous process. And people, I don't want people at the end to say, well, when was my opportunity to make it? So that we wouldn't have all those docs out in the harbor. And we said, well, it was this Tuesday back in April that, um, cause it's really hard for people to equate which parts of the project or which parts of what they see or experience are tied to which parts of, of different votes, so.
We, let's go back to Audrey and Jeremy. Let's make it back to, uh, first, the first witness test is, you know, where is Harvard committee and CDEC in terms of what they think schedule is gonna take? That's the first point. And let's see what they're saying and let's see how that's a, a data point. It's a milestone. Let's get information and compare it to what, um, you know, then we can get past select board, pass public hearing, get to a, you know, a voting schedule and work it out and show it or share it with. All right, I think we've, I think it's great you brought this table, Audrey, Jeremy, because it's a great conversation to have. Because it's a, it's a, it's got a lot of hurdles in it. But we'll see what goes. Um, with that, we'll move on to, um, uh, we got a couple of forums in the last week or so, some which we attended, some not. Um, housing forum, um, Audrey, that was the housing forum that Vicky Duder, uh, accumulated. I don't know if you want to just give us a, uh, I know that a couple of us were involved in that, listening to that forum. Just what it was about, what the content was and if there's any action from it.
Yeah, so, um, I was one of, I believe, five panelists and, um, we were asked about, um, affordable housing and housing affordability in the midcoast and, you know, what our respective organizations, um, roles are in addressing that issue. And, um, you know, I, I really, from the town's perspective, a lot of it comes down to, um, you know, what sort of barriers do we have in our, you know, zoning ordinances that might prevent the development of additional housing? Um, and also what incentives, um, can we put in places of town to, um, develop more housing, particularly affordable housing? And, you know, much more rare is when we have direct control over this, like when we have, you know, available property or, or housing stock through things like tax lien foreclosures, where we actually can sort of facilitate the development of more housing. Um, so, you know, I kind of, I, I spent a lot of time really talking about, um, you know, what are things in our zoning ordinance that are prohibitive of this that, you know, might not be obvious to a lot of people? And, you know, one, one of them, and this is the one that I sort of like, I went through a list of them, but the one that I like to talk about is the minimum parking requirements. And, and I'm gonna bring it up again, cause we had another example of it tonight of how it was not impacting housing necessarily, but businesses. Um, and I, I think it's interesting because I know there's a perception that we don't have a lot of parking in Camden. And yeah, we might not have a lot of parking in Camden if your goal is to park right out in front of the business that you want to go to and walk 10 feet to get into that business. But if you're willing to walk a quarter of a mile, which is not a lot of walking, we have a, a, a huge amount of public and private parking available in downtown Camden, a staggering amount. Um, and I would, I'd really argue that, um, it's an unnecessary amount. And, you know, there's a lot of things that have been done with many, minimum parking requirements, and this is not unique to Camden. Um, but it's really tied up land. It's caused, you know, big swaths of, um, you know, impermeable surface, and it's not the highest and best use of, you know, really valuable land. Um, and it's, it's been prohibited for housing as well as other, um, more beneficial uses of that property. So that was, you know, that's one example I gave, but there's a lot of other things that you wouldn't necessarily realize that are in our zoning ordinance amendments that are causing unnecessary barriers to developing more housing stock. So I talked about that a lot. Um, you know, I talked about getting comfortable with, um, incentives because of, you know, um, a lot of times when developers come with a proposal, um, we don't, we don't know how they've penciled out their development to make it financially feasible. Um, and that's kind of important for us to know, because there, there are, you know, limited incentives that we can do through like affordable housing TIFs to, you know, make up that gap. Um, it's, it's the, one of the very few tools that we have as a municipality to, you know, help develop more affordable housing. Um, but, you know, I think as, as you saw from the discussions about um, the Northland proposal at the tannery, uh, affordable housing tips are maligned quite a bit. Because there isn't a lot of understanding of how, as to how important they are and how it's really one of the only tools in our toolbox. Um, so yeah, that was kind of my focus of the discussion. Um, I'm happy to say that there's a lot of, uh, interest and, and energy locally, particularly by, um, Stephanie Smith in, um, looking at trying to develop a, um, housing trust. A really important piece of, um, you know, infrastructure that, you know, is needed within the midcoast to, um, address, you know, uh, the ability to develop more affordable housing. We have great, you know, organizations like uh, the Knox County Homeless Coalition and Habitat, but they're stretched very, very thin. There's only so much they can do. Whereas if we had a housing trust that could hold land, hold money, um, work with organizations like Habitat, Knox County Homeless Coalition municipalities, it would just really increase our capacity to address this issue in a, a really meaningful way. So really excited that, you know, Stephanie's taking the bull by the horns. It's everything that I, I ever hoped would happen. Um, they've got really good connections with the, um, Housing Trust in Waterville, which was developed for very different reasons. But still a lot of valuable knowledge, um, within that organization as to how that can be helpful. Um, and, you know, uh, Tia from Habitat from Humanity and Stephanie from Knox County Homeless Coalition just talked a little bit more about the, the need and how great it is and how, you know, really there's sort of no end to the amount of work and projects that they could do to, um, you know, try to address this issue. So I think it was, it was a good discussion. Um, you know, a lot of them talked about barriers that they face as well. Um, I think there was uh, the, and I, I really urged, you know, everybody who was participating and watching to get more involved in local planning boards. Because, you know, it really does take people who are committed to this issue and who understand it and who can understand the importance of, um, you know, barriers in the zoning ordinance amendment to be involved and be doing that hard work and be advocating for it, so.
Important element for playing, but for sure. Um, Audrey, what, what about the, um, um, we can come back with questions, but the renewable energy forum, you were there, and I think Allison and Mark were there. I didn't.
I didn't, I didn't go, so I'll kick it to Allison and Mark.
Who wants to tell us a little bit about the, the thrust, the discussion and does any action that came out of it or direction? Or is it, please? Mark?
Um, I. So it was, it was a little bit of, um, a mix of, um, social hour and brainstorming. Um, it was, you know, there were a few different municipalities represented, Camden, Rockland, Thomasville, Lincolnville, quite a showing from Lincolnville, um. Uh, um, a lot of them were in Knox County, but we kind of, um, all sort of talked about our priorities. There was a lot of enthusiasm from Rockland, especially revolving around weatherization. I spoke for myself, sort of saying I, um, worried about the amount of, um, energy that goes into, you know, that type of effort, sort of going around and knocking on people's stories and, and encouraging them to weatherize their houses. Um, but we did a lot of sort of brainstorming about different things that have been done and then looked for, um, some areas of agreement. One of the things that everybody seemed pretty enthusiastic about was looking for opportunities to, um, where there's consensus for lobbying, um, state government or, um, getting some speakers. Um, we talked about Seth Berry and his, um, initiative for, um, a consumer owned utility. Um, the takeaway from it, um, we did talk a little bit about, um, uh, transportation. Everyone was like, oh, sort of like we tried that, that was really hard. It didn't, it didn't work. Um, that's where I would really like to see us working with our neighbors. Um, so there wasn't, there, it, it wasn't the type of thing where all like, yeah, let's do this, this one, um, thing, but there was an agreement to try to do more, um, just talking with uh, local municipal boards that it might be that, you know, next month, another town could host a conversation. It might not always be about energy, but that sometimes, you know, we're doing, we're doing things in silos. And, um, it would be better if we all had relationships that could cross those barriers. Um, and then sometimes in the heat of the moment, we don't have, you know, we're missing opportunities just because we're not crossing paths enough, and so.
Okay, cool. Mark?
I, I think that it, it ended with, this was great that we got everybody together and it's a good starting point. I think one of the things that came up is maybe to explore what the different communities have done with the mid, midcoast, uh, broadband coalition would be a nice thing to do for energy as well. Maybe find a, a way to start the same process. And there was some interest in that. So it's, it's a bege- it's a good beginning. Um, and like Allison said, I think the, the gentleman from Rockport from the, uh, uh, Rockland from the city council there really took a, 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 the lead in getting everybody together. But there was some great participation from a lot of towns. And I think it's just, just to start in a good beginning.
You know, that word regionalization means a lot. Okay, um, what's that? Um, we have a, a discussion. I'm Audrey. Anything management report?
Yeah, I've got some really sad news to tell everyone tonight. So, um, one of our, uh, long-term employees who's been with the town for over 20 years just passed away today. Um, you know, Rodney Feltes had been battling cancer for a while now. Um, you know, he was in remission and unfortunately came back and, um, he passed away tonight. So anyone who, anyone who noticed, um, you know, the snow, the sidewalk snowplow out, um, that was Rodney. You know, he, he was very proud of, you know, of that part of his job. The sidewalks in Camden were his, you know, his absolute baby. Um, he started with the town at the Snow Bowl and moved over to Public Works. And, uh, he had a Class A license, so he could basically operate any piece of equipment. But, you know, he loved doing sidewalk work. He was incredibly proud of it. He did a great job. Um, you know, it's just really, really sad to lose him. It was just unbelievably quick and none of us expected it to happen as quick as it did. So I just wanted to say a few words about Rodney and
Thanks, Audrey.
Contribution.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, that's, it is sad and it was, um, 20 years.
Over, it was over 20.
Wow. We have a lot of long timers, but regardless, um, tough way to end life. Uh, anything else, Audrey?
Um, yeah, so, um, we are sort of going back and forth with, um, Bill Kelly and Crane's Port, um, LLC on the purchase and sales agreement, as well as a term sheet for, uh, the, the tannery. And I think it would be beneficial for the select board to have a, a workshop just so that everybody's across it, um, before April 20th. Um, you know, there are a few things that are outstanding, but I think we've got, you know, good structure around what the, what the agreement will look like. And, you know, what the plan is for the site as well as, you know, some environmental remediation. So, um, if we could set up a time to do that, that would be much appreciated.
You ready?
Can we combine that with the budget meeting? Would there be enough time to do that?
Careful, um, duration, you can, but, um, or try. Um, but I'm just a little concerned about the amount of time you're talking for the budget thing. It's got us two and a half hours this year. But it's, we can do that, I guess. But when do you need it? When do, I agree with. My April 20th is not that far away. Weeks away, literally. Um, is, you say, is it, are those documents ready for review?
There's still a little bit of feedback that we need from Crane's Port. Um, but, I mean, I feel like we do structure around the agreement.
Well, I'd like to have it to a point where we don't have any back and forth that should be completed. And if we can have that this week, then we can, we can pick a date, um.
Hold on. What's the purpose of the workshop? I thought, why would we, I, I thought the, a purpose of, the purpose of the workshop would be to maybe, if there did need to be a couple more back and forth, things if it were all like blocked down, then wouldn't we just have the?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that prior to, uh, the April 20th public hearing, all of you are comfortable with it.
Yeah, and it would, well, that's makes sense, because in the, we, we, we're at a deadline. If on April 20th at the meeting, somebody says, well, can we change this four to six? And that has to go back to Crane's Port, we got a problem.
Right.
With the power, so it's just.
But that's the kind of thing that could happen at a workshop?
No, the kind of workshop that we can talk about is, uh, why it's four or why it's six. And then at least you'll know, um, you know, what the, what the elements, complications are, the elements of the, of the, of the sheet that, that winds up being regurgitated in the purchase and sale agreement, which will approve on the 20th.
Okay, so it seems like we're being asked to go to a workshop where we also can't provide any feedback. Um, like I don't, it just seems like a waste of time. If, if by the time we get to the workshop, it's still too, I don't, but what does it matter?
What I would want out of the workshop is any, any final feedback or, um, if, if you all feel that it's just not at a point where you're comfortable putting it forward, um, you know, whatever the, whatever the case may be, I think that would be good to.
The alternative.
We'll solve that before the 20th.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, you can also, um, send out this information to us by email, so we can take a look at it independently before that workshop. So we have in mind some of the, I mean, for example, there may be an element that we, we think is, is not really crucial to the agreement. Uh, that's, that could happen too, you know, and, and we should not have the discussion on the 20th, if there are any of those. And I don't know if there are.
I, I, yeah, I was just thinking, that's the kind of thing we'd be able to say to her, like, so that she doesn't have to put a bunch of effort into, into one aspect of it. We might say, I don't really think any of this is important, but what is really important to me is, is this other part. So can you focus on that? Um,
Yep.
I guess that's what I'm thinking.
Yep.
Would, I don't want her to waste her time on.
No, I totally agree with you. That's all it should be. If we can get that, uh, the, um, of the, the work, not, but he put in the documents you called them, Audrey. There was a, um, uh.
The purchase and sales agreement, and then there's a term sheet.
The term sheet, the first, I'll bring it out to us by, you pick the date, and then we can immediately schedule, uh, uh. Uh, uh, a workshop discussion. Or we can also have individual, individual discussions with you and Carol. For education purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm more than happy to do that, but I do think that um, prior to the twentieth.
Oh, yeah, I get, I get that. I get that. I'm just, I just don't know if I feel comfortable suggesting that we schedule it right now. Until we know when you were gonna have those documents discussed with Crane's Board and that we have, you know, not, no, no going back and forth at that point. Or if there is, you can discuss it with us in a workshop.
So I think Taylor's trying to.
Oh, sorry. You're muted, Taylor.
Thanks. Um, to me, the workshop is probably a good idea. That way, if there is any questions or few, strong feelings that any of us might have about something that's either missing or. Or shouldn't be in the agreement, that we could get that out of the way before the twentieth. Um. The. I feel like, you know, what if we, if we set something tonight for next week? That's a week away.
Yeah.
There really isn't any more leeway. I feel like we might be better off just to set it.
Okay.
And that way Audrey knows that, you know, ahead of the thirteenth or fourteenth or wherever it lands.
Okay.
She has a week to get as far as it needs to go. Even if we don't see a completed purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah.
We have the big, the broad strokes. I think we can glean what we might want to.
Yeah. Yeah, Audrey, wouldn't the term sheet tell us all the key elements they're gonna go into the purchase and sale? I mean, that's a, purchase and sales, the legal words that reflect. The uh, the, the.
Well, they, they reference one another, so it's important for you to have both of them and understand both of them and how.
How about we look at, we can look at next week. Um. I still suggest we don't do it the same day as the uh, as the uh, budget, but. Yeah, I can be convinced otherwise, but I think we would look to the fourteenth or fifteenth.
Again, uh, I can do Thursday. I can't do Wednesday at all unless we do it in the evening. And actually, Wednesday evening, I can't do it as, as well.
What time on Thursday?
Eleven A F. You want to do it during the day, eleven AM?
Other, other comments, um, schedules, Taylor, what about your schedule?
Good for me.
Thursday doesn't work so well for me. I mean. I. Don't love the idea of doing it on the same day, but I do. Think maybe, maybe we could have like a, an intermission and then. Um. Then do it, because hopefully that, this isn't going to be as heavy as the whole. But, um, and so we're basically, you know, looking at something and gauging, you know, how far off is this?
Let's, let's, yeah, I get you. Why don't we do this? Let's cut the chase. Let's, let's try to squeeze it in on the thirteenth. At the eleven o'clock time period, go through the budget, see how we feel. We can always pick another date at that time if we want to move it forward.
And keep in mind, I am gonna send this out to you ahead of time, so. You know, look at it and you ha, if you have questions, get back to me.
When, do we aim to have Bill there for that workshop, Audrey?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna try to make sure that he's available because he's been really, really important in developing this.
So when, when will you send that? What proximate times, not to put a.
I'm gonna try to put some pressure on Crane's Port to get a few answers that we really need to. Yes.
Hello. So by the end of the week and then we'll try to put it on the thirteenth. After the eleven AM budget review and see how we, how we track. Maybe we'll be. Experts in budgeting will be done in a half an hour with that. Yes, sure. But anyway, we'll, we'll, that's, why don't we plan that for now? Is it okay with everybody? Alison, Taylor, yeah, okay, we'll do that. All right, Audrey?
Great.
I think it's a good idea. Anything else, Audrey?
That's the big stuff for me tonight.
Okay, okay, uh, select board uh, comments, uh, Marco.
Uh, first I want to start, I believe we skipped the approval of board minutes from March twenty third at the beginning.
Really good.
Okay, I'll come back.
I was gonna say, there is something I want to bring up with that. Other than that, I have nothing to discuss.
Remind me, Mark. Thank you. Alison?
Um. Yeah, so I'm just um. Briefly, uh, the, been working with the Watershed School Climate um, Action. Lab on a number of things. Um, some of that, Hallie, the um. Student from College of the Atlantic who's been an intern there. She's also been kind of a liaison between the town and um. The, the Watershed School teacher who does the climate class, and that's been helpful in identifying some. Projects um, that, you know, where students can be helpful. And we had mentioned before. Um, they're gonna be doing some public art stuff down at the public landing. Um, one of those things will be the, some, some panels that they're gonna put on the um. Outside of the public bathrooms, um, kind of maybe similar to what's at the transfer station in the census. Have you seen those murals that are, that are bolted to the side? So it'll be something that can be removed. Um. And we basically just said, you know, something climate related and artistic and um. Giving them sort of the um, broad. Um. Palette to do with as they will. Um, I think we all have a good amount of faith in the. Watershed School, but if not, we can speak up and ask for a detailed design ahead of time. Um. But it's uh, you know, they can always be taken down. And then the other thing which I was so delighted um. That they wanted to do, which we talked about for so long, is to do some markings on. The um, Harbor Master Shack and maybe another building or two to indicate where um, expected sea level rise. Is um, coming. And so it, you know, if I had a nickel for every time somebody in Camden said it would really be great if um, you know, we did this kind of an education thing. Um, to teach people about sea level rise, um, you know, we'd all be paying our taxes with that by now, but. Um, so finally, a group has said, can we just do this? Um, and Audrey thought it was appropriate to say yes, just coordinate with Steve Pixley. So. Um, that's gonna happen. And then just to let everybody know, we completed three um, open. Uh, listening sessions uh, related to the McGonagall. Uh, watershed restoration work that's going on. Um, Bob was there for. That with me as well, um, and some uh, students from Watershed. Those are available. On um, the Town of Camden YouTube channel. We had um. Pretty good turnout and then also a lot of people were watching on, on YouTube. Um. And you can go, it's, if you go on the Town of Camden channel, there's a playlist. Um, you go on our playlist, you can see all three of them there. Um, the first hour of the, of each three, each of the three is um, fairly similar, just a. A broad overview of some of the work that we're doing and the grants that we have. And then the second hour on each of them is the um, public comment and discussion. Period. So that's being um. Uh, we have a watershed student who's gonna be doing a senior research on the, and on this. Climate and river restoration and marine um. Things. He is writing up all the minutes and collating all the comments and all of that. So, anyway, just very much available for people to look at and continue to provide comments. Um, the next step. Is going to be um. Providing uh, some soon to be concept rung rings of the Montgomery area and getting some um. You know, additional feedback on, on that. Um, you have Tony Grassi, who is a Camden resident, and he's been really involved in some. Uh, river and mill restoration work and on the board of the Nature Conservancy and um. He's gonna be helping us to uh. Um, moderate or direct like a community conversation around that. Issue, so. Lots in the river department.
It was amazing how much work has been done. I don't think most people really understand how much has been done today and those. Sessions really opened up a lot of people's eyes as to how much, how much water is going over the dam and. In trying to define this whole problem up and down. That was, it was very informative. Um. Um, Taylor, do you have anything?
That's fine. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, me too. Uh, but back to Mark for keeping me honest. Thank you, Mark. Uh, before we adjourn, I'd like to uh, ask the board for uh, comments or motion on the. Uh, meeting minutes of March twenty third, two thousand twenty one. Mark?
Uh, the one comment uh, regarding the vote on Crane's Port, it says it's a three to two vote. I think it should list. Which uh, select board members voted for and against, so that's on record.
It is, it's a video.
Yeah, but it's not in the.
Doesn't have to be.
I think that's.
You can, you don't have to be. The meeting minutes should just record the, the outcome of the vote and we, especially when you video backup.
Oh, I mean, we can, people argue about the what should be in minutes and what shouldn't, um, you know.
If Mark's requesting it, we can put it in there.
Okay, fine.
I usually like it when I vote on something, I usually want to be sure that, that it says that, so.
Any other, any other comment?
Just put vote like that in an important issue. I think it's important. There's a lot of.
Uh, is there anything else, Mark, a comment?
No, uh, other than that, I make a motion, we approve the board minutes from March twenty third, twenty twenty one.
With. Add, add the, the, the change on it.
With the change.
Did you already discuss? Okay, second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, and any discussion, we'll call vote, Alison.
Aye.
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 Uh, four zero, Mark?
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn as a select board for this evening.
Second.
Really? Okay, um, any discussion? Sorry, cynical, I'm getting tired too. Alison. Alison.
No.
She just loves this stuff so much. Me too.
Maybe let the minutes reflect it, too.
We could actually make this a time vote and just keep going.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
No, but go ahead. We have one note, uh, Taylor.
Uh, just to be unique, I'll say aye.
There's Mark.
I will say aye as well.
Yeah, I will too, because I'll fall on my face if I don't, but I, I, I enjoy the sentiment, Alison. Okay, three, three.
The heat, the heat works again in the Tucker room, just so everybody knows. So it's actually getting a little.
You see.
Just in time for summer.
Yeah.
I know, right?
I forgot to shut it off. Anyway, uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, a lot done to get in tonight. Thank you, Audrey.
Hi, everybody.
Let's, let's button up and onward. We got a, still have a busy month ahead of us.
Take care, everyone. See you, everybody, next week.
Take care. Audrey. You didn't, you didn't, the, the, you, the um, YouTube.
I'm, I'm.